February tenth, two thousand and eleven. The legislative agenda will focus on age of compulsory public school attendance, student member voting rights, the Prince George's County Recycling Program, and the Funding Accountability and Transparency Act. The Board will receive a presentation from Supporting Services also. Uh, the consent agenda will focus on the following proclamations honoring Dr. Charles Herbert Flowers, National PTA Take Your Family to School Week, and commemorating uh national African-American history in Prince George's County Public School System. And the Board will also discuss the High School Computer Graphic Refresh Program Phase Two. The Board will also review governance of leave of absence policy as a first reader and an emergency resolution for poss- possibility STEM charter school. Uh, and now the February tenth system oversight meeting will begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to the February tenth, two thousand and eleven system oversight meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Before I begin, please turn off your wireless communications as they tend to interfere with the taping of the meeting. And as we begin, Ms. Boston, would you please lead us in the Board prayer and Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies. Being even mindful of your guidance, stir us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. The system oversight meeting for this um this afternoon will be discussing the topic of Supporting Services. Ms. Dent, call the roll, please.
Mr. Armwood.
Present.
Ms. Boston.
Present.
Mr. Barrows.
Present.
Ms. Eubanks. Ms. Higgins. Ms. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. Waller.
Present.
Mr. Harris.
Present.
Mrs. Beck.
Present.
Ms. Jacobs.
Here. Thank you. Dr. Height, your buzzer is um on, is that for any particular reason? Mistake maybe? Okay, thank you, just want to make sure. Okay, um colleagues, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda, but prior to doing so, please note that the following change has occurred. Item twelve point one, which is the Board Policy zero one one six, Wellness, Nutrition, and Physical Activity, has been deleted from the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt as amended?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, thank you, Ms. Beck. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Saying none, motion passed, thank you. Colleagues, may I have a motion for approval of the November eleventh, two thousand and ten system oversight meeting minutes?
So move.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Waller and Ms. Beck, we'll probably move in second that we approve the minutes from November eleventh, two thousand and ten, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Saying none, motion passed. Colleagues, at this time, we will have public comment on items for which the Board will take action. Public comment on agenda items for which the Board will take action. Um, there are two registered speakers for the system oversight agenda, the first speaker will speak before item number five, the legislative agenda, and the second speaker will be speak before item number thirteen, which is set on the agenda as an emergency resolution. You will have three minutes to speak in public comment, the Board will listen to your comments. We ask that you address by titles rather than names, you're encouraged to stick to your three minutes. If the buzzer goes off, you may finish the sentence that you're on. Our first speaker is David Kahn. Citizens for an Elected Board who will speak on the legislative update, Mr. Kahn, please come forward. Don't see him, as a matter of fact, I see someone sitting in his regular seat. And he doesn't look like him. So, uh, we're gonna move forward. Uh, Mr. Lucci, if you would come and present the legislative agenda item to the Board, we'd appreciate it.
Um, but uh, everything is about to happen very shortly. Uh, with regard to legislation pertaining just to Prince George's County, uh, there have now been seven bills introduced that affect the Prince George's County Public Schools. Uh, three of them were filed uh timely and we've already taken positions on those, uh, those being PG four oh four on wireless telecommunication towers that you opposed, uh PG four oh eight on the school facility search charge that you opposed, and PG four oh nine on transportation of public school students that you opposed. There are four other late filed bills that are going before the delegation for hearing this Saturday at ten AM at the Rennie Forum in Prince George's Community College. And so I bring them before you today for, uh, if you wish to take a position on them, then I can then convey that position to the delegation um on Saturday. Uh, the first one is PG four oh six, Prince George's County Age for Compulsory Public School Attendance Exemption. Essentially for Prince George's County only, it raises the age for compulsory attendance from sixteen to eighteen. Uh, this is a policy that previous boards have supported. This is the first time that there's a county-only bill, and it's unlikely that the legislature would act just for one county, but it is a policy statement uh in terms of of what the direction of the county should go with regard to this issue. And so, um, and it would mean substantially more dollars coming to Prince George's County uh from the uh state and county governments. My recommendation would be to uh to support this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Lucci, and prior to the Board um taking action on this particular bill, our speaker who wanted to speak about the legislative agenda has just arrived, so we're gonna give deference and um let him give us his opinion on those items. So if you would let Mr. Kahn come forward, we would appreciate it.
Absolutely. Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I apologize very much for being late. Um, as you know, I am the co-chair of Citizens for an Elected Board, you are our elected Board. We don't need two school boards. Three of these four bills that are on the agenda today have our legislative delegation basically acting as a super school board and legislating directly for the Prince George's County Public Schools. There's one bill that is certainly within the province of the legislature because they have the only authority to do that, and that's the bill that would expand the powers of the student board member, which I support. However, I want to talk about the other three very briefly on their merits. When you take the largesse that's handed out by the delegation, you also take the things you don't like, you justify them acting uh instead of you acting. Now, if you don't act the way I want, then I can come and criticize you, I can vote for somebody else the next time, or maybe someday we'll have recall. But we don't need their help in doing your job. For example, um, on the um, uh, I'm sorry, the um transparent, so-called transparency, I like the idea of you all putting up the contracts on the school site. But I can ask you to do that, or one of you can ask your colleagues to do that, we don't need them to, and it's a terrible bill anyhow. The, the idea is great, but it, it has the appearance of transparency with no transparency at all, it only covers payments. You don't know what the whole contract was for, uh, there's not even a line in there as to the purpose of the contract or a database behind it where you can look up and see whether this is a program you might like or not like. So there are a lot of things that you could do as a Board that this wouldn't do. Similarly, with the expanding the age, you may get some more state aid, but you also have to educate more children, but there are flaws in the bill itself. The uh, the bill says that uh, there's a fine for employers who hire somebody of uh the age of seventeen, sixteen or seventeen while school is in session. Well, first of all, their parents may have given their permission to drop out. Secondly, some of them may be going to the evening high school, we've been talking about a lot, how's an employer supposed to know? Um, if they're gonna do this, they should do this statewide, and then um we can work on the bill and make it a much better one than it is now. And there was a third bill, I don't have the agenda with me here, but in any case, I like you as a school board. Win or lose, whether I like everything you do or I don't, I support the Board. We don't need a second set of legislative, uh, of elected officials doing your job, you do your job. And uh, some of these things I like, so I or others will be asking you to do them. Do your job, we don't need the state telling you what to do. However, on the database or the, the listing of contracts, I think it's a great idea, and if you don't do it willingly, obviously the state is gonna force you to do it if it can. And with deference to the delegation, you're gonna have it come down on any, on you anyhow. Take the coaching, the delegation is saying they want this, I think the people want it, several members of the Board have said they want it. Do it voluntarily and do it right, uh, and uh, you won't have the legislature breathing down your back. Thank you very much, and Madam Chair, again, I, I do appreciate the opportunity to speak even though I was a little bit late. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kahn. Someone's in your seat, so you may have to find somewhere else to sit, right next to the camera. Okay, Mr. Lucci.
I'll, I'll just tell Mr. Kahn I would love for him to join me on Saturday when I, when I testify. The second bill, PG four seventeen dash eleven, Prince George's County Board of Education, Student Member Voting Rights, uh, this bill would um, uh, would repeal some of the restrictions on the student board members' voting rights. The bill would allow the student board member to vote on capital and operating budgets, uh, school closings, reopenings, boundaries, and student, student disciplinary matters. Uh, the board member will continue to be restricted from voting on matters related to collective bargaining decisions, teacher and administrative disciplinary matters, and other personnel matters. Um, and this bill is sponsored by Delegate Marvin Holmes. Should I go through all four?
Well, you might as well, since it's four, I was gonna do each, but it's, it's a small number.
Okay. Uh, PG four twenty, Prince George's County Recycling Program, Student Faci- uh, School Facilities. Uh, this bill was presented to the legislature last year, and it was um withdrawn. Uh, there was a consensus both among the Board and among the delegation that recycling at school facilities was a, a good idea, uh, last year, at the time the superintendent asked the uh then-county executive to consider expanding the county program to public school uh facilities. Um, since last year's session, a law took effect October first of, of two thousand and ten, which requires all counties to include public school facilities in their recycling plans. And so, um, as a result, uh, it's my opinion that this piece of legislation sponsored this year by Delegate Summers and Neiman is not necessary and that the Board should oppose it. Uh, finally, PG four twenty-one dash eleven, Prince George's County Public Schools Funding Accountability and Transparency Act, sponsored by Delegate Valentino Smith, will require a searchable database by a payee amount and zip code of all contracts of excess, excess of twenty-five thousand dollars. It's identical to laws that have already passed that govern the Howard County Board of Education and the Montgomery County Board of Education. I advise that the cost of uh compliance with, with the law is negligible, and um, I see you have that before you as well, it might, uh, I mean, it's only a policy that I think this Board has taken in the past in terms of transparency and placing many other things on its website already, and so it would be consistent with that. So those are the four pieces of legislation that all have hearings on Saturday that, which I'll be there and guided by your decisions today.
Thank you, Mr. Lucci, if we could go back then to um PG four oh six. Uh, it, can you tell me what the distinct difference is in this legislation than what we've seen in the past, other than, uh, I was also, uh, some, the language seems somewhat confusing in that um, on the one hand, the parent could give consent for the child to withdraw at sixteen or seventeen, but then it goes into talking about first and second offenses. Um, there's no definition, I'm assuming the bill is using the definition of absence based on what the school district has or MSD would have for that, and then I'd like to hear Dr. Height's um position on it.
It's a little bit confusing, and, and, and besides us being restricted to the county, the, the penalty provisions are a little more expansive than they've been uh in the past. Um, and you Board may just want to take a position based on the, the concept of the bill as opposed to the actual language, knowing that it has very little chance of, of passage.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Height, did you have any comment at all?
I was just gonna add to Mr. Lucci's comments that I think in concept, I'm certainly in support of this, but as you read through the contents of this proposal, it is hard to follow how you provide some of the dispositions based on um first offense, second offense, or first conviction, second conviction. I think that it would need a lot more clarity um in, in how it's um described or how it's submitted, but in concept, I'm in support of increasing the age, I just don't think this bill gets to the specifics of that.
Thank you. Colleagues, I entertain a motion on PG four oh six. I have a motion to oppose, and second by Mr. Ms. Johnson and Mr. Armwood, any further discussion? Ms. Higgins?
Uh, yes, is it possible to oppose with comments reflecting uh the comments that have already been made as opposed to just opposing the bill?
Ms. Johnson accepts that as part of the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
That we do support raising the age, Ms. Johnson, without, and, and believe that the language needs to be cleaned up.
Traditionally, when that type of position is taken, it's called support with amendments.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
If you wanted to do that. Well, do you want to do that, Ms. Johnson? And Mr. Armwood?
We're not amending, we're opposing the bill.
Okay, so you do.
But I, I'm accepting um the um request of uh Ms. Higgins. It's true, I believe, and I think we have spin on record, we believe in raising it to eighteen. This bill isn't gonna get it there, it is unenforceable, it is ambiguous, it is so many messy pieces. Um, we either are in favor of eighteen and we put the services and things in place to maintain and support the children, but this um, I think is gonna be more paperwork and stuff that is not gonna get us to where we actually want to be. I think they're trying to get it truancy in a back door. Um, I, I think that's what they're, what is happening here, they can't do it that way. We either believe in eighteen or we don't. Thank you. So how do you want it done?
Um, well, actually, Ms. Johnson, it's up to you, but at this point, hold on one second, Ms. Higgins, did you have a further comment?
Yeah, I think um at this point, it would take um so much effort to make the amendments. Um, so oppose with amendments, I'm not proposing that, I'm saying oppose but with comments, and specifically to the one that filed the um.
Okay.
So that they understand next time if they want to do it, what, what dialogue we would be interested in having.
Mr. Armwood?
Is it, what is involved in um the amendment process? Are we proposing an amendment to them, or, and do we have to have it in language that matches what the legislature needs?
You can propose the, the concept behind the amendments and leave it to their build draft to come up with the actual language. I, I think uh, in reality, what's gonna happen is they're gonna say, this is a good idea, it needs to be statewide, and they'll hold the bill. So it's just an opportunity for the Board to express its support of the, of the concept without saying, without getting into the weeds of it and saying we agree with a specific language. So it's possible to say support in concept and then you disagree with the language of the bill.
So essentially, though, you can have a narrative when you're there Saturday that says this is what the Board has traditionally and continues to support raising the compulsory age, however.
The language is, is ambiguous, unenforceable.
So, Ms. Johnson, your original motion um that would include um the opposition based on Dr. Height's comments would be appropriate. Okay, Mr. Armwood, do you still second? Thank you. Um, hearing, no further discussion, Ms. Dent, call the roll, please.
Mr. Armwood.
Aye.
Ms. Boston.
Aye.
Mr. Barrows.
Aye.
Ms. Higgins.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Waller.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Ms. Beck.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
For my own clarity, could, could you just um tell me what the motion is, I just wanna make sure I have it right, in terms of what passed?
The motion on the floor is to oppose, but to indicate that the language as stated um is convoluted and doesn't get to the very points that we think it should for the compulsory age. And then before Saturday, we'll have staff recount for you Dr. Height's comments, if that would be helpful.
Got it, great.
Ms. Dent, so noted. Thank you. All right, uh, that brings us to PG four seventeen. Mr. Harris?
Um, I would like to put a motion on the floor to table this item. Um, we have many students that would like to come speak out about student member voting rights, and because this was a day meeting, set at one o'clock, the students were not able to come out, uh, so I asked that we table it to a, a nighttime meeting where the students can be where they voice their opinions about this matter.
Um, Ms. Harris, then so I'm correct, there's no discussion on tabling, is that correct?
As I understand it, the Board is delivering each of these bills one by one, so you would, he's made a motion and it's been seconded, so I do think you could have the discussion.
No, he moved to table.
To move to table, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right, there is no discussion on the motion to table.
Okay, thank you. Um, so noted, Mr. Harris, this item has been tabled, and Mr. Lucci, if you would note that for your record so that you can properly bring it back. Oh.
Second.
Thank you. Can you call the roll?
Mr. Armwood.
No.
Ms. Boston.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins.
No.
Ms. Johnson.
Motion to table.
Ms. Waller.
Yes.
Ms. Beck.
No.
Ms. Jacobs.
No.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Did it fail or did it pass? How many noes and how many yeses, please?
We had five yes, four nays. Need six.
Don't you need six yes?
Yes.
The motion on the floor was to table. And you had, how many yes?
I had five yes to table.
So it's not table?
Four no.
That's nine people, is somebody missing? Oh, someone is missing, okay. No, you need six votes. So it's not table, okay. All right, um, Mr. Lucci, you can disregard, I, is there a motion with regard to PG four seventeen eleven? Mr. Harris?
Um, what this bill does is it gives the student member a true voice. Um, the principles of democracy, uh, a republic, a body of people, your, your, your real opinion is by your vote. Currently, the student member does not have a opinion on the budget, which is the most important thing to the system, because I do not have a vote. I can talk all I want, but until I vote yes or no, I do not have an opinion, and that's what this bill does. Um, and a, a lot of people are concerned, okay, you're, you're a young person, you're under the age of eighteen, I really, to be honest, that, that doesn't matter. Um, I work hard, I read, I read at night, just like you guys do, I ask my questions, uh, just like the adult members do, and at the end of the day, there's a reason why you have more than one person voting or making decisions. And if I want to get something passed, I need five other people standing beside me voting yes. Um, I mean, if you read John Adams, I mean, these are, these are, you know, the, the principles of what, you know, our government is built off of, putting the power in the hands of many. And that's what this bill does. Um, you, you know, I, I'm not asking for, uh, the, you know, the, the bill is not asking for um the student member to vote on personnel, and I, I don't want to get into, you know, the fight with the unions, I'm simply asking to vote on what really matters to the students. Currently, the students don't have a, a opinion in the budget. We have a eighty-five, well, we just, we have a hundred and fifty-five million dollar uh budget cut or, or deficit right now, and you're telling me that the student can't, can't uh voice his opinion about this? Um, you know, we really need to have the students to have a voice, and that's what this bill does.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Barrows?
Thank you. Uh, colleagues, I actually didn't plan on speaking on this today, I thought it would be tabled so that we could have uh students come and, and talk to the Board, but uh, this is, you know, known as school day, so a lot of uh representatives that would eagerly come to testify before the Board cannot do that. Uh, I just want to mention, uh, so I actually rise in support of this, is no surprise, I served as a student member for two years prior, um, and one thing that I've learned, and one thing that we've all learned, is that if we want anything done, we can't do it by ourselves. Um, we're only one vote. And if, unless five other people agree with you, you can't do anything. So whether it's the budget, whether it's boundaries, whether it's the bu- no, regardless of the situation, if you don't have five people that feel the same way you do, nothing can happen. Um, this is just giving a, a voice to the students. Some say that how can a student member vote on the budget he or she doesn't even have, they don't pay taxes, if they don't, uh, they don't have a home budget, they don't have income, well, uh, the truth is, the budget is, as the members will, as we're feeling now, it's just a matter of priorities, honestly. Um, are we gonna fund ROTC, are we gonna fund reader recovery? It is a, it's more so, what are your priorities, what is the direction of the system? Um, it is not trigonometry, and if it was, Mr. Harris would be able to do that, too. Um, so, you know, I would strongly urge my colleagues, and also, this excludes personnel. Um, so the, the fear of the student member voting on their teacher or their principal, um, or whatever the case might be, uh, does not come up at all because he cannot vote on, the student member cannot vote on personnel. Uh, this is a good bill, I urge uh my colleagues to support it. Um, we're really preparing our, our student members um to uh be future leaders um in our society and on our school board, in my case, um, and I would really appreciate a green vote.
Thank you, Mr. Barrows. Ms. Beck?
I've heard this discussion for years about students, um, student members of the Board who want a vote. I have disagreed with this for years. I do not believe that students should be in the position of being a deal breaker when there is a divided Board and the student is lobbied to go one way or the other. And I think that that's an environment um that I prefer people who have worked, who have paid health insurance, who have paid rent or mortgage, car insurance, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I just don't agree with putting a student into that adults of a role. There have been many students before who have championed this cause with the same arguments, and I have yet to hear anything that convinces me that the student needs this vote. I would have by this point expected a student to have brought this up at every vote. If I had a vote, I would have voted like this, but this is a last-minute add-on. I have concerns, Mr. Lucci, about student disciplinary matters, which appears to be something the student would vote on.
Correct.
Um, I think that is highly inappropriate, that a student would participate in a discussion of student disciplinary matters. Um, in addition, we have fabulous student members, but I have yet to engage one who can explain to me boundaries um in the depth that adult members have been able to do. So I am against this again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beck, Ms. Higgins?
Yes, thank you very much. Um, Mr. Harris, I would like to, to say that I truly have appreciated your contributions in this budget process and think that your thoughts and comments have been very thoughtful and helpful. However, I will also- However, I will also be voting against this issue, and it really has to do with some of the statements that you made about this being a democracy. The difference between the school board member and the student member is the other school board members have been elected by the taxpayers in terms of how to address the budget and the personnel matters. And while you're right, the students then, in the sense of direct, I mean, those who are over eighteen certainly can vote for us, but their parents certainly vote for us in terms of making sure that we look to address their issues. So because everybody else on the board has been elected by a body of registered voters, that, to me, is a deciding factor. So I, too, will be voting against this bill. I would like to braze another issue that is a concern to me, but is not necessarily the reason I'm voting against it, is that this bill, my understanding was, we as a board were going to address the General Assembly or advocate for any education bills as a unit and with one voice. And this is coming from the General Assembly, based on your advocacy, and I think that we would be well-served, that when we have educational issues that we want to discuss, we as a board come together and speak with one voice on it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Ms. Waller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly, students, you all are leaders today and not for the future, and certainly, I appreciate the insight that you've given and that you've contributed to the processes that we are going through. And certainly, I will not echo some of the expressions expressed by my colleagues, but I, too, will not be voting for this bill. But I believe that we are providing our students an opportunity to speak individually with board members, participate in our board meetings, and through PEGRAS and other organizations, they are able to convey their thoughts and provide us input. And certainly, when we're dealing with students' lives and the lives of our administrators, et cetera, I believe that there has to be a certain maturity that goes with that. And I know that's probably, it doesn't sound nice to talk about maturity, but maturity goes along, and some of our students are mature and they can handle the responsibility. But this is not just for one year, and certainly, Mr. Harris is a very fine young man, and he has served the students of Prince George's County wonderful, and we look forward to working together with him. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Mr. Armwood?
I also want to say that Mr. Harris is the finest example of a young man that I've met, and if I could be assured that each year, we had that quality of leadership from the students, I would be very much in favor of this bill. However, in the very nature of students, they often do not show the maturity or have the maturity and are subject to influences, outside influences, that may cause problems. And I have no objection to student board members having a vote on the budget. I think that is something that if could be specifically requested, that would not be bad. But for personnel issues, for appeal issues, which require a life experience and a ethical basis, that they have not had the opportunity to fully develop, we can't go in that direction yet. Mr. Lucci, if I understand correctly, there's only one jurisdiction that has a voting, full voting student member, is that correct?
That's correct, Anne Arundel County.
And that's the only one in the country? Is that also correct?
I know about the state, I don't know about the country.
Okay. Okay. But that's an experience, experiment that we do not need to take at this time, and I am against that. I would be in favor of having a vote on the budget, but the other issues would cause me serious concern. And that's not a statement against our current student board member, I just wanted to make that perfectly clear. Because if it was him and I had him every year, he could vote on everything with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armwood. Ms. Johnson?
Just very briefly, particularly to our current student board member, having been around since before student board members even existed on this board or any board, having worked with young people, I do agree that we have tremendously wonderful young people. I have, in most cases, been extraordinarily thrilled with the student board members we have had from the inception. But there are times when that becomes problematic. And I do believe that there are certain segments of the work of being a member of the board, whether they are seventeen or eighteen, you have to look to see if they are ready. I think the budget is an area that I could support as well. I really believe that I could. Personnel, clearly, I think, as Ms. Higgins and others have said, those are areas that I honestly believe that time-living, time-experiencing have to be a factor. But I think the budget is something that I could support, the student board member moving into that area. But full voting rights, I can't do that. I think there is such a thing as a child, and there is such a thing as an adult. And no matter what happens in the world, young people are here, adults are there. Sometimes, young people are actually better than the other people, but that's not the way the world works, so... If we can move on, but I support Mr. Harris's request to ask for it. I do think that he is quite terrific. And if we hadn't everybody looked like that, did like that, we would not be having this discussion. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Boston?
I, too, have the same sentiments about Mr. Harris. He is a remarkable young man, very intelligent, very articulate. I support him to, as far as voting on the budget, I think that he has, and I think other students coming up probably have the expertise to vote on the budget. I, too, have concerns about personnel issues, voting on... A question, Mr. Lucci, is it any way that this bill can be reworded to just include voting rights on the budget?
I mean, you could, the board could propose that amendment if it chose to.
Well, that's, I would like to see the bill reworded, colleagues, that we could give the student board members voting rights on the budget only.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. As we complete a comment, then we'll entertain a motion, if that's what you desire. Mr. Harris?
Just to have a few quick comments, and to give a little bit more about the history of student member voting rights. So, Mr. Lucci was correct, there is a member in Anne Arundel County, I forgot her first name, but I know her last name is Struggs, and she does a phenomenal job. And when I went to the MABE Conference and talked to a couple of the other board members from Anne Arundel, they like, they love the fact that their student member votes on everything. The way she carries herself, what she adds to the conversation. Also, the state student member, last year, there was a bill passed that gave the state student member the right to vote on the budget. So we're not experimenting, if we were to say, if you guys wanted to make a motion for the budget. But just, I think, we need to move into a place where we have a new way of thinking. We, you know, back in the, you know, I think it was sixteen hundreds, you know, Europeans used to take baths, you know, twice a month, because they thought that taking baths would kill them, you know, at an early age. But we've seen that that's not the case, and many other things. You know, women suffrage, everything, just a new way of thinking. Student member brings a valuable experience, and one I'll talk about from yesterday. Dr. Height was at my school, and he was in the auditorium talking to some counselors, and he heard over the loudspeaker, "You have one minute to get to class, or you will be suspended." And he was taken back by that. They say that over the loudspeaker? That's something that I can tell, I can tell him exactly what happens every day. Once, to some of our board members that have been here previously, actually, I'm a product of you guys. I came in, I was, I came in the ninth grade, and I'll finish my statement, but I came in the ninth grade when you guys were elected to the board, and your policies directly had an effect on me. And I would just say that for PEGRAS elects our student members, elects our student members from the entire body of students. When they come to PEGRAS and they vote, so that's about a hundred and twenty-nine thousand students that are voting on the board, I mean, that votes on the student member. And the legacy that the student members carry, we understand what we represent, and we take our jobs very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Burrows?
Also wanted to point out, Mr. Harris mentioned that the Anne Arundel County School Board is well pleased with their student member having a full vote. And like I said, if we had, if we were to table it, Jonathan and myself would be able to get testimonies from their board members, and also, you know, testimonies from several students. But I also want to mention one thing that I heard from one of my colleagues. That was the pressures that the student member could face. And to that, as an elected member of the school board, representing a district, with all the political pressures that we face, the student member is only accountable to the students that he was elected by. He doesn't have to worry about party bosses, or, you know, no offense, but he doesn't have to worry about a union, or... Or anything, any outside pressure. He's able to vote based on what he believes or she believes is in the best interest of our students, and is accountable to no one, doesn't have to worry about an election. So when we talk about pressures, I think that's actually a benefit to have him or her without pressure on these, on these very important issues. But I definitely, I heard my colleagues when they said they would support a vote on the budget. So if it is possible, I guess I'll actually give it to Mr. Harris, think it's more appropriate for him to make the motion, whatever he sees fit.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. I won't belabor the point or repeat what I've heard, I know I often say let's not do that. Two points come to mind. One of the most important things that we ask the public to do when they elect us is to hold us accountable. So accountability actually matters. So we have to be held accountable. And I might be splitting hairs, but voting on the budget is voting on personnel matters. And if this particular budget doesn't demonstrate that, I don't know any other budget that would. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Colleagues, you have spoken, and I would like to make a motion that, I guess, we would approve it with the amendment that student member only will be allowed to vote on the budget. Am I hearing that correctly from Ms. Boston, Ms. Johnson, Mr. Armwood? Is that what I'm hearing? So that's the motion I would like to entertain.
I think the recommendation is that we are, that we would only be approving of, or some of us, if the way that the bill was written was rewritten and in areas with regard to budget being added, the other items as they are, we support them staying there. So I'm not sure that whether we're doing an approval of the budget or we're approving what has been written with an amendment.
We're not doing anything. I don't have a motion. I need a motion to what you want to see it to be, and then I need a second.
And a motion to do what?
I need the motion that you want to put before the body. I'm not telling you what motion to do, I'm saying, give me a motion. I'll entertain a motion with a second, and then we'll vote accordingly.
I move that we vote opposing the legislation as it is written with the comment that we would support adding the vote for the budget.
Is there a second? It's been properly moved to second that the Board of Education opposed PG 417-11, if I heard correctly, with the comment that the board would support student voting rights for, on the budget. Any further discussion? Ms. Waller?
So, what, so that I can understand the motion. So we're recommending that whoever introduced this, go back and redo this bill and put in that we will support this if they put a provision in there that the student member can vote on the budget. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what it sounds like the motion is doing, Ms. Waller.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Is that your motion, Mr. Armwood?
That was my intent, to add the right to vote on the budget only.
And so therefore, is this, would it be a reality that would happen in this session, Mr. Lucci?
Yes. Not if you oppose it. Because what you're saying is we reject this bill, come back with a bill that just has this section.
And so the likelihood of it going through this session would not happen, is that what you're saying?
Right, because the final position of the board is opposed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dent, call the roll.
On the motion, Mr. Armwood?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Pass.
Ms. Higgins?
No.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Waller?
I'm voting to oppose the bill.
And the motion was what? I'm sorry.
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Beck?
No.
Ms. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Burrows?
Yes.
Five yes, four nay. Motion failed.
Okay, so the motion failed. We can move forward, I'll entertain another motion if there is one. Seeing the other, Mr. Lucci, would that go forth as a no position? Well, actually, we would have to, we would actually have to move to take no position.
Right, it would just not be on the list.
Okay. All right, so that brings us to... Okay, that brings us to PG 420.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Can we just get clarification from the board as to exactly what the status is in this particular bill for the minutes?
Well, because the motion that was on the floor, which was to oppose with a, with a, an addition or a change, failed, then we don't have a position on it, because there's, we don't have any other... In other words, it's, the position is not no position, the position is the board's motion to oppose with comments failed. And no other motions were made.
So then the status is the board has taken no action at all on this particular bill?
So Mr. Lucci is unable to say that the board supports it, and he's unable to say that the board opposes it? I guess, I don't know.
Right.
Could we have made another motion?
Absolutely, I said I'll entertain another motion if there is one.
Then I will make another motion, if that's appropriate. I move that we simply oppose the bill.
Second. It's been properly moved to second to oppose PG 417-11. Let's see, Ms. Higgins? Ms. Waller? Did you have a comment? Okay, all right, call the roll, please, Ms. Dent.
Mr. Armwood?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
No.
Mr. Burrows?
No.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
No.
Mrs. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Lucci, you're clear now?
I am clear.
All right, next bill is four, PG four twenty-one dash eleven, which is the Funding Accountability Transparency Act. Colleagues, any, um, entertain a motion with regard to this bill.
I move to oppose. I feel that this is something we can do on our own and investigate, um, to go outside of the descriptor in the legislation. I hear the concern, but I agree with Mr. Khan, this is something we can do on our own, move to oppose.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins, it's been properly moved a second that we oppose PG four twenty-one dash eleven. Any further discussion, uh, Mr. Armwood?
Um, I don't really oppose the motion, but can we, one of the things that concerned me, I'd like to ask Dr. Height, can we provide the information that they're asking for now? Because I spoke with a legislator last night and he was saying we need to provide that information if we can in a readily available view.
I'm trying to get a clarification, are we talking about four two oh one one or four two one one?
Four two one. I'm sorry, the transparency and funding accountability.
The transparency. The, um, this is something that we have the ability to do now, Mr. Armwood.
Are we doing it now?
No, we are not. And, and I think it's a good idea, actually, but I'm, I'm not sure it takes legislation to, to force us to do that.
Is it possible we can direct Mr. Lucci to go back and tell them that we will provide that information on our own, with our own resources?
Yeah, inside of, um, our performance management work was the development of this type of report and we are still constructing that through the data warehouse. We will have the ability to do this very soon. Um, and in fact, I think we have already begun putting contracts on the web, um, recently. Mrs. Stansky?
Yeah, just to add, so right now, anything bided, bid on and awarded, we post on the website. What we're working on is to post all no bid and bid awards on, on our website.
Thank you. So, uh, I did ask for a further clarification this morning after having talked to, um, Delegate Valentino Smith. And I haven't had an opportunity to look at the link in Montgomery County, uh, and I think there's one other county, I just can't remember.
Howard.
Howard County. I haven't had an opportunity to look at the link, but I also asked what the fiscal note was for that. And apparently there's an initial startup cost, so if you're able to do it now with the structures that we currently have in place, then that satisfies me. But I'm not opposed to, uh, and I, my question, Dr. Height, really was around the twenty-five thousand dollar. That's such a small number in a one point six billion dollar budget. My curiosity was whether or not that was something that from a data entry perspective was easy to, to be able to do. That's such a, such a small amount.
Yeah, that's a negligible amount, uh, Madam Chair.
Right.
Considering a budget, but by the same token, we have the information to pull such a database together. And it would just be collecting the rest of the information so that we can be transparency. I mean, we could have transparency with that type of, uh, with all of our contracts.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Um, twofold point here. Uh, one, I agree with our speaker, um, this is, um, becoming a second school board and I agree with that. The other is, this is coming from the attitude that somehow or another we are hiding stuff, um, that we're doing things illegitimately, we're doing it behind their back, we're not fully informing the public. Um, and this is also thirdly, uh, getting your name in the paper so that you can go back and get re-elected by saying, I done something. Uh, I brought the school board to heel. Uh, no, I don't think we do that, this is not games. Um, but I do believe that the superintendent can proceed with, uh, getting it up. But this is gamesmanship. Uh, we got serious issues. We're eighty-five million dollars in the hole on our budget. Um, and we're dealing with twenty-five thousand dollar small contract? I don't think so.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Um, for the record, to be clear, we are discussing, I, I was trying to go in numerical order. We're talking about four twenty-one eleven, I apologize, uh, which is the Transparency and Accountability Bill. There's a motion on the floor to oppose and a proper second and we're in discussion now, Mr. Burrows.
Thank you, Mr. Lucci. Uh, I, I also, um, I agree that, uh, the school board can do this. Um, however, I do support this bill. And I actually wanted to see the bill expanded upon to add, um, whether it's a minority business, uh, whether the contract was awarded to someone in the county. Um, and also, we have, uh, significant, uh, issues with change orders. I mean, I would be in favor of showing the amount of change orders that one company, um, uh, one company, um, accumulates over a period, over a period of the project so that, uh, it's a way to hold them accountable as well. Um, if they give our school system a million dollars in change orders, another school system is not going to want to do business with them. So it's a way of holding them accountable as well. And also an evaluation of, 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 of the contract, was the service, uh, provided in a, a decent manner? So I actually support this bill, I would actually like to see more in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows, Ms. Beck.
I, I don't understand, um, how you can want to see more in a bill so you tell our lobbyists to go to a delegate to add more into a bill that gets voted on in Annapolis to tell our superintendent, who's right there, who's saying, we can do this. If you need more in, uh, what we clearly all agree is a good idea, then I would say the board looks to the right and says, we agree with this concept. It's too bad it had to land on our table in bill form rather than a phone call as a suggestion because this board has the authority to tell the superintendent, we want to see minority contracts as a searchable item on our webpage. We don't need the circuitous route to directing our superintendent to be more transparent. And that's where I, that's where I feel that we need to assume our authority to direct, to direct the superintendent rather than to use, um, delegates to do our work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beck, Ms. Dent, call the roll please.
On the motion, Mr. Armwood?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Uh, this is to oppose, so if I say aye is to oppose?
Yes.
Uh, aye.
Mr. Burrows?
No.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Eight ayes, one nay, motion carries.
Thank you, and the final bill is four twenty eleven, which is the recycling program for school facilities, is there a motion?
Move to oppose based on the advice we have that this is currently, um, enforceable at the county under a two thousand and nine piece of legislation?
Right, that took effect October one, two thousand and ten.
Thank you.
Second. It's been properly moved a second to oppose four twenty eleven, four twenty dash eleven, discussion, Ms. Johnson?
Very quickly, Mr. Lucci, you know that many of our schools have newspaper recycling bins, they're fundraisers. Would, how would this impact them? Or do you see an impact for them being able to raise additional funds?
How would this bill impact them?
Uh-huh.
That could be part of the superintendent's plan to include that or it could not be part of the superintendent's plan, but that would be discretionary whether to include that as part of the recycling plan or not.
Meaning they could keep the monies that are raised from the bins that they currently have as long as they are part of the total recycling picture?
That's correct.
Or we could say, we're keeping all the money?
Right.
That's, we have to look at that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Boston?
Uh, I know a few years ago, the school systems, a lot of the schools did recycling program and that money came into, um, the budget of the school and the school was able to use that money. And then I think last year, it started out and the money went to the school system and then middle way of that school system, it stopped. Um, we were no longer doing recycling, which I really don't understand because in this time now when we're all talking about green, I, I do not understand and, uh, while we are not doing some type of recycling, um, Dr. Height. So if you can explain to me, I mean, are we planning on doing this? This could be a source of resources or funding for some of the schools that are now having problems even raising money to get paper. So I think in more detail, we need to talk about how we're going to reinstitute the recycling program within the school system.
A year or so ago, Ms. Boston, we had a recycling company who, um, put the recycling bins at many of their schools and offices. In the middle of the year, yeah, they changed ownership and discontinued that service. So they discontinued the service of having the bin at our schools, they came to pick those up. We started negotiating again with the, with the company and then they're putting the bins back. And so we have a lot of the recycling bins back at our schools. But as Ms. Johnson indicated, many of their schools are using this recycling in general as a fundraiser. The bill that the board chair was referencing was House Bill twelve ninety from two thousand and nine, which requires the county to amend their recycling plans to include county boards of education. So we had to figure out inside of that, how do we allow, um, schools to still use recycling as a fundraiser? We tried to do, we tried to utilize the county's recycling program before, but it was cost prohibitive. They were actually charging, they were planning to charge us to come and implement their recycling program.
Thank you, Dr. Height, so it sounds like the county may or may not be in compliance with the legislation that was passed in two thousand and nine?
Right, I, I've asked them to let me know, uh, what's going on with that.
Oh, okay, could you keep us posted as well?
I sure will.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Mr. Harris?
Um, I think we do need a recycling program, I think we all agree about that. Um, but in light of the bill that you talked about in two thousand and nine, where it actually requires the county to, um, to implement something, to implement a, a recycling program, um, I can't support this bill i- if that's already in place. Uh, we need to be looking, talking to the county about that. Um, because there's others, there's other things that the county should be helping us out with also, that they have decided, um, not to help us out with. So I think we should need to take this fight to the county and not to, to, uh, to, to Annapolis.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Ms. Dent, call the roll please. The motion on the floor is to oppose PG four twenty, made by Ms. Beck and second by Ms. Higgins.
On the motion, Mr. Armwood?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Lucci?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you in two weeks.
Okay, colleagues, um, that concludes our legislative update. Uh, the hearing is Saturday. Mr. Lucci, at what time? Ten AM at Remy Forum, Rennie Forum. Um, so colleagues, if you're up at nine AM on Saturday, uh, you can join Mr. Lucci for that, um, discussion. We were kidding. Uh, no, feel free to join Mr. Lucci, um, by all means. Okay, that brings us to our system oversight presentation, Dr. Height. And, um, colleagues, I now yield the floor to him for that. When we do our question and answer session, um, we'll do it, um, as we do in times past on each, each section of the Supporting Services Division. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and as you know, there are several times during the year when we do a presentation that is an oversight of systems inside of, um, our, our county school system. And today we will go, we will be presenting Supporting Services. And Supporting Services will really walk through their core work, their key performance, um, index, how they're performing against that index and just talk about their plans of actions associated with that. Just for, um, the board's information, Supporting Services includes food nutrition, plant operations, maintenance, safety, planning and architectural services, security and transportation. So I now, um, yield the floor to Mr. Michael Dodson, who will walk us through this presentation.
Uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board, Dr. Height. Um, this afternoon, Supporting Services is going to provide you an oversight of Supporting Services. And as we, uh, walk you through it, uh, what we will be demonstrating is how the work that we do, um, falls right into the mission critical areas, goals, the five, two, two of the, um, five goals. One being safe and supportive services, the other being effective and efficient operations. Um, we'll, we'll not read, um, the slide word for word, but the mission statement for Supporting Services is really to provide support, uh, for our students in, in the areas of, of food nutrition, architectural and planning, food services and security. As you see here, um, we have a breakdown of the, the departments that were mentioned by Dr. Height and what we provided for you was the FTE count for each of the departments, uh, under, um, under the Chief of Supporting Services and the number of FTEs, um, in that particular department. Each, uh, director will come up and, uh, speak to the specific department and will be available to answer any questions you may have after the presentation. Uh, the first, uh, individual that'll come up would be Ms. Joan Shorter and she'll speak to Food Nutrition Services.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, good afternoon, Dr. Height. The Department of Food and Nutrition Services supports a, a healthy lifestyle for students in Prince George's County Public Schools. The services we provide enhance academic success and achievement. In keeping with our mission statement, or in support of our mission statement, I'd like to just give you a brief introduction of some of the services that we do provide. We provide nutritionally balanced meals. We participate in programs that support a healthy, that support healthy eating and also the consumption of more fruits and vegetables. In addition to providing meals in the school, as our mission statements, um, refers to, the Child and Adult Care Food Program, um, we meet the needs of our students by providing reimbursement to family daycare providers who service our students before and after care. We provide reimbursement to them because they provide nutritious meals to our students. We also provide nutrition information and facts for those family daycare providers as well. This is what we do. The staff, um, that's listed, the list of staff is, is all that we do need and we need all of them to run an effective and efficient operation. We prepare meals on site in each of our kitchens, of course emphasizing more whole grains as well as fresh fruits and vegetables. We process, provide nutrition education information to parents, students and staff. In addition to that, in terms of our promoting the nutrition program, we work with the Alliance for a Healthier Generation, the Healthy Schools Program and we support their mission for a healthy lifestyle, for wellness, physical activity and better nutrition for students. The application center processes meal benefit application year round. And what we try to do is we try to capture as many students as possible who are eligible for free and reduced price meals. They also maintain that data in the application center. We do a quarterly computer match with the state agency. They send us the file of all the students who have, um, recently, um, been approved for, um, food stamps or temporary cash assistance program and we do a quarterly match with that information and we generate, looking at the match compared to the student enrollment and typically in a, a quarterly, we probably certify an additional thousand students. We maintain a point of service computerized system at our schools that assigns a PIN number to each student. The PIN number is there for the, so that we cannot overtly identify students eligibility category. This system also allows us to track meals by eligibility category and to track other, um, if we want... if we want to look at sales in our, in our schools, most popular items, that system allows us to do that as well. And we consult with the Department of Planning and Architectural Services on all new school and renovation projects as it relates to remodeling the kitchen, building new schools, kitchen design. Our fact sheet. Employees, we have nine hundred thirty-six point two four FTEs. That's equivalent to over a thousand employees because many of our employees are three and a half hour employees. The majority of our employees are the ones that are in the kitchen cooking and preparing, serving the meals to our students. Our office staff consist of supervisors, clerks, technicians, and specialists in the program that we need to operate. Our annual budget exceeds $67 million. The board supplements us. Included in that is a supplement from the board, and I think it's averaging about $6 million per year right now. Daily meals, we provide four meal types this year. We do breakfast, lunch, snacks, and suppers, and you can see we do a substantial amount of meals every day. We currently have three hundred ninety family daycare providers enrolled. Our farm statistics, more than half of the students who are enrolled in Prince George's County Public Schools are eligible for free and reduced price meals. That accounts to about sixty-nine thousand students. Of those sixty-nine thousand students, eighty-five percent of those students participate daily. They eat lunches with us, so that's about fifty-eight thousand six hundred if my math Our key performance indicators, in keeping with goal five, efficient and effective operation, is that one of the target areas that we're looking at is increasing participation among those students who are eligible for free and reduced price meals. Currently, we're at eighty-five percent participation. The target that we had set for the goal is eighty-seven percent. We are on track to meet or exceed that goal. And especially at the elementary schools, we're feeding at ninety-two percent of the students who are eligible for free and reduced price meals. Middle school and K through eight academies, we've exceeded that target. The high schools, we're still working to improve participation with those students. The other key performance indicator, um, one of the goals that we set for ourselves was to increase student revenue to $3.15. Currently, we were at, when we prepared this report, looking at our numbers, because we do our, look at our numbers every month as we report to the state at the end of the, the end, our meal counts, revenue at the end of the month. So we looked at our December figures and we were at $2.91. That was the average revenue per student. I'm happy to say that the reporting that we conducted today and looked at those numbers, we've increased that to $3. So we're, we're steadily increasing. Some of the plan of actions that we'd like to do, we look at the overall operation, is to look at how can we increase participation, how can we generate more revenues? Some of the areas that we've been looking at is, one is to develop a marketing plan. I think that we have not been very successful in marketing our program to nutritional value to parents and students. So we, we, we plan to do that. To increase, we want to increase breakfast participation. We know that breakfast is the most important meal of the day. So we're trying to increase breakfast participation by marketing breakfast in the classroom, grab-and-go breakfast. That opportunity, we will be able to increase breakfast as we've just been funded through the Walmart Grant Foundation for fifteen schools. We would just receive that information last night. We would also like to increase the number of vending machines that we do have in our high schools. We sell à la carte items in our high schools, canned juices, hundred percent juice, we sell iced tea, we sell water. Typically, we've been, we've been selling those on the serving line. So to increase the vending machines, that will, the outcome of doing that will allow the students, will shorten the length of time the students are online to purchase a meal. They can go directly to the vending machine and purchase those items and also generate additional revenue. The items that we plan to put in those machines are all items that are approved USD regulation, by USD regulation, or approved products through the Healthy Schools Program. Accomplishments to date, we have developed a profit and loss report by school. And what we use that information for is for comparative analysis between schools, similar schools. It also helps us in the area of looking at each school individually in terms of inventory control, food cost, labor cost, just to see how effect, if we're operating efficiently and effectively in keeping with goal five. We developed a six-week cycle menu to better control meal costs while meeting nutrient standards. That allows consistency in all of our schools. We went to a cycle menu as well because what we're looking at also is participation in the Healthy U.S. Schools Challenge, which awards $500 to each schools for meeting the bronze level. So we've modified our menus to, to include more whole grains and fresh fruits and vegetables so that our schools can meet the bronze level. We've also increased the number of schools participating in, in the supper program. The outcome, we, we recognize that there are a lot of students that stay after school for enrichment activities. The snacks was not a substantial meal for them to maintain them through that process, through the number of hours that they spend in school. So we were able to convert our before and after care schools and the sup, the, um, enrichment programs who, that were participating eligible, eligible sites to the supper program. Before I leave, I'd like to just leave you, as we've been talking about, we've had a lot of, um, back and forth discussion in Congress in regards to the new reauthorization bill and the funding for the child nutrition program, as well as increasing the funding to offer more fresh fruits and vegetables, which is what we currently do in Prince George's County. And so our $67 million budget, um, with the cost of food and being supplemented by the board, we have, we have proceeded, moved ahead and started to do that, to increase more fruits and vegetables. But before I leave, I'd like to leave you, um, just a little excerpt from President Obama's speech just before he signed the reauthorization bill in December 2010. And what he said was, "We've seen the connection between what our students eat and how well they perform in school. And we know that countries that succeed in the 21st century will be the ones that have the best-prepared, best-educated workforce around. The Department of Food and Nutrition Services is committing to, is committed to providing healthier school meals and quality service because we know the connection between proper nutrition and academic performance." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, and there's been so much discussion around this issue. Yeah, you have to stay for questions.
I forgot. I'm new to this.
Um, thank you. Dr. Height, did you have anything else to add before we go into questions, questions and answers? Okay. Um, thank you for that presentation. I have, uh, Ms. Johnson, Mr. Harris, and Mr. Armwood.
Okay.
Good evening. Uh, we've met on several occasions, and so I'm not gonna elaborate. I am rabid about what we serve. Let me ask you, um, which is also along with the superintendent, you are correct, he is correct, that what children eat do enhance or minimize student achievement. So to that end, I want to ask about, in the Head Start program, um, they eat family style, and the teacher and the aide, they must eat with the children. But what is paid for, for the adult meal, the children's meal is pretty well covered under the Head Start funding. But the adult meal, as well as the snacks that go the two times per day, there is concern, I want to make certain, um, that that is not breaking our bank nor the, you know, Head Start, um, as well as there are requirements as to what can be served to children, to vegetables, et cetera. It is my understanding, because I'm the liaison to the Head Start, um, group, sometimes the cafeteria is making adjustments that are not in keeping. I, I would like to have you to, to be very careful, that we are providing to those little ones exactly what they're supposed to have, and that no adjustments are being made in the name of money, cost. The other item is, um, the quality of food in our vending machines. Would like to, at some point, get a report, how are you doing the oversight, what's going in? Next item, um, children are being rushed as they eat. Scheduling, master scheduling has turned meal time into feeding time. That's a problem. Children are wolfing down, bolting down. I understand master schedule, I understand. Dr. Height, so I would say to you, we need to look at what level of school time expansion. Children can learn and socialize and learn and eat and socialize and learn if they have enough time to do that. Children are being told, throw the food away because there's no more time left, you used it all up. Children are getting to the cafeteria and people are breaking into line. So by the time the first one in line gets shoved to the back of the line, because the bigger ones and, and the bolder ones keep pushing them out, they have like thirty seconds to eat. And then they're being told to throw it away. We are responsible for whether or not our children eat when they're in school, and I believe that we need to care as much about their eating time and what they're eating and how that food is being consumed as we are about whether they're learning to read and write. It is important. And my last one is, um, that if we can do that, expand, work on the cafeteria being a learning place, then I believe that it can become a teaching time with videos, uh, lectures, et cetera, even in elementary, about what's healthy eating to cut down on children consuming junk food at high rates when they go home, um, and turn it into a really happy time for them, um, like happy vegetables and stuff. You know, down at Disney World, they have a whole movie theater from Kraft Foods, all about healthy foods and stuff. We can't go that far, but I do believe that especially in elementary school, we can turn their lunchtime, their eating time into a fun time. We need to look at that, um, to help children choose better. So I do thank you. Somebody who ate school lunches because she was too lazy to pack her own lunch, I know what they're like. So I will submit to you, we gotta do a good job. Thanks.
Thank you. No comments. Mr. Harris?
Uh, first, um, I would like to say, Ms. Johnson, if I had one point, uh, I'm not gonna talk about it too much, but students are being rushed, uh, um, at lunchtime. I mean, it, it really does take, especially in, in the bigger high schools, uh, in the bigger elementary schools, that it takes at least fifteen to twenty minutes, I have your thirty minutes to get through the line. And, and don't, don't be late. Don't be late. I mean, uh, you, you'll, you get a chance to eat a, a chicken nugget, there you gotta go. Um, there's so much I want to talk about that, that's in food and nutrition. First, I see, um, I know him as Chef Jeff. I see them, him back there, and I just would like to say thank you. And, um, and it's the reason why I want to say thank you is because he's been so proactive, um, as, as getting students to come in and test new products, um, about the food. Before I was, uh, voting in as student member, um, one of the, actually, one of the, one of the things that I, I told the students that I did, uh, a part of my campaign was, I worked with him to improve the quality of the food, and he's, he's done leaps and bounds with that. Vending machines, um, this is a good que, uh, the question I have is, is it a state policy that they need to be off during the day? Is that a board policy? Um, so is, is state?
It's the board's policy.
Um, and then also, for the vending machines, who, whose revenue is it? Is our revenue, uh, is it, is, is, who, the money that's from the vending machines, where, where is it going?
Schools revenue.
Um, I, I would encourage us to, uh, look at that policy again. Um, I think if, if we put the right snacks inside, that, you know, go along with state policy, go along with, um, Michelle Obama's, um, initiative, uh, I think that that is something that we can, especially, it can, it, it could offset the, the cost of, I think we are, we still are in the red, uh, when it comes to food and nutrition as a whole because we're, we're, uh, we are not charging as, as much as it costs to produce, right?
Correct.
We still, we still are in the red. Um, so I think that will help out. And the talk about, um, that students have a hard time understanding, and, um, and rightfully so, they have a hard time understanding why we keep on seeing rise in our cost, uh, of food, but the quality does not always go up. Um, so I would like to, I would like to see you guys do a better job at making sure that across the board in every high school, um, the quality of food is good, every chicken nugget is cooked, uh, correct. Um, I, I have some pictures that I took from Potomac and I, and I showed the board and showed Dr. Height of, of some of the quality of the food, and I, and I believe it did make it to you guys. But at certain schools, no problems at all. At other schools, pre-cooked, I mean, um, you know, half-cooked, um, you know, food and, so that's something that I would like to see, uh, done and, and looked at a little bit more. But thank you, I, I encourage you, every school, if we can have a small program or a little coalition of students who test the pro, new products, our students appreciate it. And also talking about how exactly getting that message out to the students. It costs four, four fifteen, forfeit, four, $4.15 to produce that meal per student? Is that still the number?
Three dollars, it costs $3.35.
Okay. $3.35. You know, I think pushing that message, that's how much it costs every single day. Pushing that message to the students so they can actually understand why the rise in costs, but also justify that by making the quality of food better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Armwood?
Thank you. Um, I also share the concerns about the conditions eating in the cafeterias, particularly in high schools. But I realize that's not necessarily food and nutrition's issue, that's the school administration as far as managing their, uh, lunch periods and administrators. It is horrible in some of those high schools with administrators yelling on louds, uh, loudspeakers, hurry up, sit down, and all, all grouped together. But that's not why, why we're here today. Um, with the vending machines, the vending machines go to the school or to the principal, so to speak, that revenue. Do-
School activity funds.
Right.
Yes, sir.
How do we control what goes into those vending machines, uh, is one question? And, yeah, how can we control what goes into those vending machines? Because I've seen then many vending machines that have very unhealthy products because that's what the kids are buying and that's where the most profit is.
We, we've entered into a, um, a system-wide contract with their, with their vendors, Mr. Armwood, and that's one of the ways that we began controlling. And you could see that a lot of the drink machines have been replaced with water machines, um, they're more nutritional options, which we just heard Mr. Harris says, say he's not particularly fond of. Um, and, but a lot of this was, uh, a lot of this was contained inside of the healthy initiative that, um, the Board of Education, uh, took on three years ago, is with a grant that we received, and it was for the Healthy Alliance. And the, one of the first portions of that was really to deal with the choices, particularly in vending machines. So we went to a systemic-wide contract for vending machines.
Um, another question, um, getting off of vending machines, have we considered have providing, let's say gourmet meals or meals of higher choice, which we can then sell at a profit, uh, to the students, still healthier than what they're getting? Because if you go into high schools in particular, you see them in the, uh, what is these, hot fry lines?
The à la carte lines.
Yeah, the à la carte lines, getting decidedly unhealthy meals while the healthy, full meals are going empty. Uh, those lines, uh, just sit unused.
We are exploring that, that, those possibilities and looking at the items that we can offer and, and based on the school, the equipment that we have, what can we provide, what those services can be.
Okay. Now, a harder question, high schools in particular, uh, what percentage of high school students who are eligible for farms are actually signing up?
Sixty-two percent.
Sixty-two percent.
Are actually participating that are eating. We do capture a lot of high school, a lot of the high school students do not submit meal, their meal benefit application. We're able to get those students on board with the program because we have a family application. So when, if they have a sibling, they usually listen on a sibling application, so we can capture those students as well.
Okay. How much revenue are we losing from farms, uh, applicants, students who are not participating?
We're actually not losing any revenue. Our reimbursement, um, from the state, federal reimbursement is $2.74 with the additional, so I'd say maximum reimbursement is maybe $2.91 when you add the state subsidies, the commodity subsidies. So that's, that's our total reimbursement for a meal.
Okay.
It costs us $3.34 to- It costs us three dollars and thirty-four cents to produce a meal, although we want to encourage all of those students to eat because we recognize that there is a need based on their application, based on the need, that they meet that criteria so that we want to provide a meal for them.
Are we pricing the non-FARM meals high enough so that they have a stronger incentive to sign up for the FARMs?
Yes. Our current meal price is two dollars and seventy-five cents for a paid meal.
How much does it cost to produce that meal?
It costs us three dollars and thirty-four cents.
Why aren't we charging full load for that meal that is not a FARM's meal?
I think we had a fifty cent increase this year and so that would be a decision that the administration would have to make.
What is your revenue loss as a result of not charging full freight for the meals?
It's at two ninety-one, we're at three dollars now, so about thirty-four cents.
So thirty-four cents times how many students are eating lunch on average? How many students are eating lunch?
Lunches that are non-FARM?
Per meal. If you multiply the number of meals you have times thirty-four cents, approximately how much revenue is being lost?
So, Mr. Armwood, let me try and help. The General Fund subsidizes the Food Service Fund about six million dollars a year. So that means that the revenue bring coming in and the versus what we're spending to serve the meal is, there's a gap of about roughly six million dollars every year. So that's when the General Fund has to come in and subsidize the six million. We just raised lunch and breakfast prices last year fifty cents. And always the concern is when you raise prices is you tend to lower demand in the first year or two when you raise prices. And so we have some of the higher prices in the area, I know, when we looked at it. So obviously, yeah, the price for the, that we charge for the meal still does not cover the cost, nor does the reimbursement from the federal or state government. So it is obviously an issue that, you know, that is concerned, but that hopefully answers your question.
Okay, I was trying to see how we can raise revenue or lower our losses in those meals by raising the prices and not impacting the FARM students, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armwood.
Mr. Armwood, we would have, I mean, to answer that last question, it would be, we would need to raise the price of the meals another fifty cents.
And considering that many of these children are used to buying McDonald's and outside meals, if we provided something that they would eat, we could probably do a little bit better than what we're doing now.
We did see a participation drop initially when we raised it fifty cents a year ago. And so we have to always take that into account. But you're right, it's with a price that matches what students perceive as the quality of the choice. So both of those things would have to be considered.
Thank you. Ms. Higgins?
Thank you. I want to thank you and your staff for your proactiveness and success in getting that Walmart grant. I know it takes time and effort to look for grants and then file and so congratulations on the success of that.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask a couple of questions. Are we contracting out any of our cafeteria services?
No.
Okay. And then I wanted to ask, and I don't know if this is a question for you as much as a operations question. I've been getting calls about silent lunchtime periods. Is that, that's probably another issue or could you speak to that? Dr. Height?
Unfortunately, I would love to speak to that, Ms. Higgins. And one of the things that we're discouraging is a time when students are asked to just be completely silent during the only time during the day that they can actually socialize. And we have, and I say we, I'm talking about the leadership, have asked and requested that principals or lunch monitors or staff not use silent lunch as a mechanism for getting students in order. And if you have to, then it should be for a very short period of time, a minute, two minutes, not the whole period. And just as you described, silent lunch periods, which are a problem, also other problems are the problem Mr. Armwood described, individuals on intercoms just yelling at students randomly about sit down, throw your trash away, those types of things. And so we want, we want to create environments that promote conversations with students and promote it in a way that is respectful.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate those comments. We'll make sure some of the principals get that.
Yeah, so the other, so when we hear of things like the two that you described, we should, if you would bring those to our attention and then we would have staff just kind of address that.
I've asked them to put it in an email and send it to me as soon as I get it, I'll let you know. Thank you, appreciate that. And then one last question, I just wanted to piggyback on Mr. Harris's comment. I'm not sure there's much we can do about it since there's only so much time on the day, but I do want to acknowledge by the fact that our children or youth are not, don't know how to eat because they have to eat so fast once they get through that line. And when you sit across from them at a table, it's really, they, five days a week, they're eating fast so they can get through their lunch period. So that means they're not really learning good sitting down eating habits as well as obviously that food is being in real quick. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Ms. Waller?
Thank you. In school board District Three, I've been to some of the elementary schools and they're expressing a concern about the number of breakfast products that have sugar in them. And they talk about, for instance, chocolate milk and I think we call it strawberry milk. And so they're wondering how to ensure that we get some of the sugar out of the breakfast foods, especially for the younger students because they start, you know, jumping around. And of course, I am concerned at the high school level, middle school, whatever school level it is, during the lunchtime, that we do need a decorum in our, you know, lunch facilities. And we need to ensure that this is not a breeding ground for our students to begin to participate in other activities that will disrupt the school day. Do we have someone, Dr. Height, that's working on what we can do at some of the schools to lower the loud decibels and bring them down? Is it possible we could play music or something? And I know that we've had several issues come up about tweeting. And I would like to think that it's not going to be happening, you know, during lunchtime. Let's hope not anyway. But that is a concern that I do have of what can we do during the lunchtime that can make it more of a creative time, a relaxing time, but still it has to be sort of structured. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waller, and you're right. I think there has to be a decorum for both students and other staff members for that matter. And I think in places where I've been and I've heard high decimal levels, it's been from someone on a microphone yelling at all the students who are there. And I think in some cases, then it just becomes background noise and the students attempt to talk over it, which then makes them louder. And I think we could serve the same purpose by just kind of moving around, talking with students, particularly in smaller groups. So where we have seen that, and we've seen, we've seen it both ways. So we've seen places where you could walk into a cafeteria and just talk with students and other places where it is pretty loud. And we've, when we get those situations, we work with the administrators on how to construct practices during lunchtime to help with that. The third part of this is really the design of some of the cafeterias. And we have, Mr. Harris talked about his school. You know, we have a school with three thousand students, but a cafeteria that will only seat, you know, a few hundred at one time. And so that creates this dynamic where for a good part of the day, you're having lunch and you have very few students in, based on the total population, and so you have to have five and six lunches and you have to get kids in and get students in and then get them out. So we're also trying to work with, how can we create other places? And I think an example is Y has created a senior lounge. And then, so seniors eat in their own separate place where they have a serving line. So schools are attempting to be creative with how to handle some of those challenges with facilities.
And this may fall into the area of facilities also, but to ensure that the areas where the food is being prepared or disseminated, that they are properly air-conditioned. I raised this once before and when I went back to the school, the people came to me, they said, well, you didn't do anything, Ms. Waller. I thought, well, I bore you with the administration's attention. So now I would like to have an update on that. And so when I go back to the school, they can say, oh, Ms. Waller, we have air-conditioned or air conditioning in here and we're cool when we need to be cool because we're working hard. Can you provide us input on that or, no, it's not Oxon Hill. So we're in District Three, thank you.
Do you have to know the name of the school?
Yes, I do. Would you like it now? You want me to give it to you offline?
We'll be glad to take those offline, Ms. Waller, but all of the, I don't know if all of those, I don't know if all of the cafeterias are air-conditioned. So I have to, I'll have to get that from staff. I don't think they are.
No, they're not air-conditioned and it's hot in there and they will have these big fans. And the people said it's uncomfortable for what they're doing and I've been in there and it's been hot. So I will give that information to you and we'll work on it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Burrows?
Thank you so much, all you do. We've definitely improved with the quality of our food. When it comes to health, I see a lot more, well, I saw a lot more salads and fruits and vegetables. And I know that's a direct result of the board's action last year, Ms. Iler's actions among that. I do have a concern with the à la carte lines and like the fry lines, the pizza lines. So a student would, you know, bypass the traditional meal and get fries with chili and cheese on it and that would be their meal and not actually a real meal? How do you monitor that? Because that was extremely, extremely common with the chili and cheese over the fries or, I mean, that would be the meal and that would qualify for the meal and students would eat that, get extra cheese, extra chili, I mean, day after day. How do you monitor that or?
In most of our high schools, in our secondary schools, what we have discovered is the cafeteria managers have actually polled the students and their preferences. And so when we try to offer, we do have the traditional meal lunches that we do and all of our meals really meet the nutrient standard. And so what we do when we offer those items, what we've discovered is when we do the turkey pot pie or do the spaghetti and meats, they don't, they complain, they don't want that. So then we lose participation. So I think in the situation that we are in financially, what we do is we look at, you know, take our cue from the students, what their preferences are. And the cheese fry, with the french fries, really, under USDA guidelines, it's a little different. So the french fries would count as a vegetable and the chili and the cheese with meat and the cheese is a meat. So if they were to grab a milk or a juice, that would meet the meal requirement for reimbursable meal.
And so how do we as a board correct that? Or do we, I mean, what are your ideas behind it?
Well, we offer a variety of items. As you said before, salads, we have salads daily, we have hot entrees, we have cold entrees, deli sandwiches. We give the students a choice. So we can't delegate what you should have or what you shouldn't have. Maybe if we cut back on some of the offerings that we do, then we lose participation. So we're kind of caught in that middle road of this is what we would like to do. So what we do now is we look for products, for example, our french fries. We start looking at the nutrient content, you know, flash fried, we don't fry anything. We start looking at the chili, is it turkey chili, is it made with ground beef? The cheese sauce, is it a reduced fat cheese? So we look at those specifications before we purchase those items for the cafeteria.
Thank you. And also, my fear, if we raise meal prices to, you said, three dollars and thirty-four cents, it will become a lot cheaper for students to walk across the street and go to McDonald's and that's what they would prefer anyway. So have we even considered partnering with, like, I know Subway or an outside, you know, food group to come in and have we considered that?
I think we've looked at that option a couple of years ago, the previous director, but I'm not sure because we would still end up with Subway. Subway sandwiches over three dollars, I think for Subway sandwich. And I think we do a much better job, we, you know, so we're looking at, as we're going through our cycle menu and we're looking at the products, we're really taking a closer look at those items, the deli meats, all of those to try. And that's what we do, we compete with those Subways and McDonald's and Burger King. So we're constantly looking at those items that we serve.
Mr. Burrows, we are currently looking at other sources outside of the district to look at strategies to improve our menu. And the other thing that we're working on is our presentation of the food as it's displayed in the cafeteria, in terms of the lighting, how it's dished out from the pans, a full pan of lasagna versus a half-pan of lasagna with the correct lighting on it. The presentation really makes a difference as does the students' interest in eating the food. So we're really looking at how we can improve the presentation as well.
Thank you. And my last question, some of our students in the system, their only meal is at our, is at the school. In the morning times when the buses come a little late or on time, the cafeteria is already closed, what are we doing to ensure that we still serve breakfast? We still, when the lines are extremely long, when I was a student, the lines were very long and because I was a senior, you know, I would just, you know, move up to the front. But what do we do to make sure that all of our students actually eat, especially the students that that's their only meal?
The, one of the things that we are currently working with under the Walmart grant is breakfast in the classroom. Excuse me, working with the other departments and how we can make the meals available for students that may arrive late, whether they're walking, whether they are being transported in. And I think that would be able to cross over any students that may miss because of that schedule and having that meal available for them.
Thank you. My very, very last question. So when you have food left over, I've, you know, especially, what do you do when you have a lot of food left over?
Currently, we've been managing a lot better than we have in the past. So we're actually batch cooking, so we're producing meals as the lines come through so that we don't have, to ensure that we don't have a lot of leftovers. We try not to. We use forecasting par levels in terms of ordering and preparing. So a lot of times, and occasion, you know, the line, the students might come through the line and the pizza's not ready yet because we're waiting for the number of pizzas to be prepared for that line. So we're trying not, we're trying to get away from that because leftovers, we serve it the next day, but ideally we don't want to do that. So our managers and our supervisors have been working closely together to ensure that they are producing what is needed so we don't have any waste.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Ms. Johnson?
Very quickly, I want to commend Laurel High School. Last year, they began something called Spartan Hour. It addresses the academic questions, et cetera. They have a single period that is for meal. And the young people can eat or go to a classroom and work with a teacher or just go to the library, meet with their friends. And there are multiple places in and around the cafeteria that are set up. They can go to the cafeteria for the full-plated meal, they have à la carte line and they also have food carts in the hall. This, to me, is wonderful and the students like it. It's one hour, it's done, it's over and they're back on their schedule. But I will tell you, to me, it is a best example of how do we prepare meals, get them to students, students will eat. And I think more students are actually eating now because they have choices, not only of what to eat, but where they can eat. Not only of what to eat, but where they can eat. And the food's not all over the building either. It's all in and around that hall area of the cafeteria. And as I said, the food carts with hot dogs, hamburgers, you know, lemonade, that kind of stuff, full-plated meal in the cafeteria, or the a la carte. If you haven't seen it, you need to. The school and the principal, they ought to be commended for having listened to the students. It makes a difference. And it is moving closer to what young people in Europe have been enjoying forever. We can't do a two-hour lunch like they have, but clear, or we could, but clearly, it is about humans. It is the best. It is absolutely the best. And I would encourage all of our high schools and middle schools to look at this because it is about people, not feeding them like cattle. So I would ask you to look at Laurel High. People thought, eh, maybe it actually is working. It's very good.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And thank you for responding to questions and answers. Colleagues, we have six. Dr. Height, did you have a comment on that?
Oh, no. While you were transitioning, I was going to add that in January 31st, 2006, all school systems were required by the Maryland State Department of Education to provide a nutritional policy that prohibited from 12:00 a.m. until the end of the last lunch period, schools from selling minimal nutritional value snacks. So that, to your question, Mr. Harris, was this a policy? It's board policy, but the board policy was constructed as, in response to requests from the Maryland State Department of Education that said all jurisdictions had to have a policy that dealt with nutritional values of food.
So, Dr. Height, just a question. So is there a way that we could get around that? By, is it like by adding in healthier snacks or something like that? Or does that pretty much, is there really no?
No, you would have to change your board policy. So you have a board policy, and you could add to that policy the types of snacks, if you will. But those snacks have to meet a certain nutritional value based on this policy from the Maryland State Department of Education.
Okay.
I thought there was boilerplate language that was submitted for that. Anyway, moving on. Okay. What I mean is that there was the language that they wanted us to have in it. We have six more areas to cover. The time is 3:00 p.m. or a little after. So, Mr. Dawson, if you will, for the next two sections, instead of stopping at each one, if you would have your staff cover the next two, which I think is maintenance and planning and architectural services.
Yeah.
We'd appreciate it.
Okay. I'll be, I'll be, sorry. I'll be covering the maintenance department. And start off by saying the, how vital the department is to the school system and the safety and well-being of our students. The mission statement is really centered around emergency responses, compliance requirements, in order to provide staff and community a safe and comfortable nurturing environment. The next slide speaks to what the maintenance department does. To ensure maintenance and safety of all schools, maintenance really gets really involved in a lot of systemic, systemic issues for the school system, whether it be emergency repairs. And one of the things with the maintenance department, they work very closely with architecture and planning to address some of the capital issues that we deal with in that department. Safety, a variety of compliance issues is required by maintenance. Prior to the ADA being moved or placed into another area of the system, maintenance works really close with ADA at this current time to address issues such as restrooms and playgrounds for students with disabilities, as well as the federal mandated asbestos management programs. The maintenance deals with the Fire Department, Health Department, EPA, OSHA, as well as MOSH. As you see there, the maintenance department is involved in reorg at this time. And there, the positions and the number of employees in each one of those positions on this slide. The fact sheet for maintenance, they're currently 300 employees in the maintenance department. The annual budget, as you see there, the restricted amount that you see, the 5,261, is reflected of the utilities for the school system and the unrestricted amount. The maintenance department maintains 20 million square feet of facilities, provides HVAC sensing for 30 schools, and completed 28,000 work orders, February 2010 to January 2011, as well as maintaining repair buildings, grounds, more than 200 sites. The maintenance department, key performance indicators, the Health Department inspection work order. The completion target is 180. We're currently on track with 106 and feel real comfortable that we'd be able to meet our target and hopefully see some favorable outcomes in regards to maintenance of our facilities in the district. The Fire Department inspection work order completion target is 250. We're currently on target with 150 Fire Department work order completions. Another key performance indicator is the emergency energy, excuse me, the energy performance consumption. This is the EPC program that the school district, going into their second year of the program in regards to energy performance. That ranges from everything from lighting, the vending machines, transformers, boilers, HVAC. And this allows the school system to see a monthly reduction in our utility costs throughout the system. The next KPI in that area is the emergency work order completion. And I'd like to say that in that area is one of the very, very strong parts of the maintenance department in regards to responding to emergency calls, emergency concerns. At this point, our target is 100%. We'd like to say that that's what we shoot for, and we strive to get that 100%. Currently, we are on track with 90% and feel confident that with continuing to look at the KPIs and work diligently, we'd be able to reach that 100% target. The next KPI for maintenance is the principal's top 10 work order completion. At this point, we are at 69%. Our goal is to reach 100%. The challenge with the, as I'm seeing and really getting more information on the principal's top 10, there are work orders that become part of the principal's top 10 that I see don't get removed from the principal's top 10 and don't reach a closeout phase. So therefore, that work order remains open. So what we are working towards to begin to close out those work orders to really get out of the at-risk area is to be, the supervisors will begin the conference with the master foreman. And really, it boils down to working towards accountability and being able to close some of the work orders and get a better completion rate. Focus will be put on completing, increasing the completion rate by deploying additional manpower to that top 10 work order request. The accomplishments for the maintenance department to date, developing aging schools application, CUSAB and state systemic projects for state approval. The maintenance department, as I said at the very beginning, works really close with the CIP. And to be able to really look at the CUSAB as being a major priority for the system, established a 30, 60, 90-day action plan to reduce outstanding work orders. Work orders languished, have languished longer than they should have. Should have been addressed with more urgency by staff, by leadership. And now we're moving into that direction to be able to do that. In October 2010, there were 14,000 backordered work orders. And at this juncture, they're now 12,000. So a lot of work has been put into trying to reduce that backorder work log. Along with the 14,000, the Plan Ops department did, they were actively involved in the maintenance medic projects to be able to address those of the maintenance medic product, projects or tasks. There were 1,142. And with the maintenance department, I mean, with the Plan Ops being involved, they were able to do 10% of those tasks to complete 120 of the maintenance medic projects. So with the merger of the two departments, we're going to attach, attack this 30, 60, 90 and make some strides to improve those. The other accomplishments are developing a tracking system for Fire Department and Health Department violations. So we stay in compliance. Because if we aren't in compliance, the Fire Department, Health Department will provide a notice to the system in terms of the closure of one of our buildings, and that can't happen. So we have developed that tracking system to prevent that. The health, safety, and welfare list was developed. Our goal is to be able to address those major renovations and FY 11. Those tasks range from anything from fire hydrants, curbs, lighting. We have begun to work on those, and we will strive to have those health, safety, and welfare items done in 2011. The accomplishment of the snow removal process, I will say that the accomplishment really was the last year's snow removal, which was huge. And staff worked really hard around the clock to assure that our buildings were ready and open for staff and students. So that's more reflective of last year. But it is a major accomplishment to our staff for working hard to get the buildings open. As I complete the maintenance, I'm available for any questions. As the chair said, we'll go straight to the CIP, and there'll be questions after that. Paul Taylor will present.
Good afternoon, members of the board. The Planning and Architectural Services, the mission is to improve the facility infrastructure of the school district, to include the construction of new buildings and also the renovations and improvements of existing facilities. What we do is focus on first, developing the capital improvement program. We do that in coordination with other departments in the Division of Supporting Services. We also coordinate with the instructional programs. And also, we focus on the facility condition and coordinate all of those items together into the CIP. The CIP is an action plan that is primarily informed by the Educational Facilities Master Plan of Priorities. We also maintain a library of information of drawings, specification, warranty books, and other information that primarily the maintenance department or anybody else has access to so that they have the information they need about our existing facilities. We have 20 employees in the department. Those employees are supported with an annual budget of $2.3 million in FY 2011. We also have a $76 million capital budget that was provided in 2011. And that is the bulk of the resources that we use to complete our work. That work is performed by the outside firms, the architects and the engineers, and also contractors that we use to design and construct our facilities. I'd like to go to the accomplishments and then go back to the KPIs. Accomplishments, we looked at calendar year 2010 to come up with these accomplishments. Because the CIP is a multi-year program, we need to look at a big picture to see where all of our accomplishments have taken place. We're very proud that we continue to be on track for receiving gold, lead gold certification for our schools, the new schools that we construct. Another major accomplishment was the establishment of on-call construction management, program management, and architects and engineering firms, which would shorten the time needed to get projects to the design phase and also to the construction phase. And that feeds directly into my KPIs, which I'll talk about in a minute. During calendar year 2010, we awarded seven design contracts for a total value of $6 million. We awarded five design build contracts for a total of $8.4 million and awarded 17 construction contracts for $31.8 million. We also completed 16 construction projects. Their total value was $40.9 million. We also participated with the school, the Pupil Accounting and School Boundaries Office to develop an educational facility master plan, which was applauded by the state. That fed into an approved process for developing the Capital Improvement Plan, which is the action plan for the priorities in the Educational Facility Master Plan. That also has been well-received by the state. We submitted that CIP for 2012, 2017. And currently, the state has an approval status of 13 of our projects received an A. 13 received a B, which means they could be approved except for funding difficulties with the state. And only three projects received a C, which means they had some questions about it. And that is an improvement over last year. The key performance indicators, we have a total of six key performance indicators. These performance indicators are relatively new. We established them in the view of identifying those major milestones in the execution of the capital improvement program so that we can more readily track the accomplishments as we go along. Actually, starting at the bottom, the, our target for FY 2011 is 24 design awards. In 2011, we had one at the time that we put these documents together, but wanted to update that. And just recently, we formally finished our procurement process and this week awarded 17 additional design awards. In terms of design completions, our target for FY 2011 is 37. We did complete four. The remaining projects, we already are on schedule for being submitted to the board in March for approval. And then others are in procurement, and we anticipate those will all be approved before June. In terms of construction awards, we actually exceeded the target already. Target was 13. We accomplished 14. In terms of construction completions, our target was eight. We exceeded that to 15. And closeout, after the project is completed and occupied, we have financial closeouts necessary to get reimbursements. Our target is 20. We've already done seven, and we believe we're on track for the remainder of those closeouts. The other key performance indicator is the change order rate. Last year, FY 2010, the baseline was 5.6%. We're, at the last check, we were at 5.3%. Our target is 4% for the fiscal year. I should define how we're now measuring the change order rate. We are looking at every single project that is in construction. It's a comprehensive look. And looking at all of the projects that are active in construction, we look at the change order rates on all those projects combined and average them out. But so that we can show progress as time goes on, when a project is closed out, we drop it from the statistic. And as a project is added, a new project, we add it to the statistic. So we're always looking at, at any one point in time, all So, we're always looking at any one point in time, all of the current projects that are active in construction that could possibly get a change order, what is the change order rate on all of those projects? And we believe we're on track for that number to continue to trend down. So, by the end of this fiscal year, we'll meet our target at four percent. Gone over the accomplishments. That concludes my presentation. And if you have any questions for the last two departments.
Thank you. I have Mr. Armwood on the list.
Thank you, sir, for your presentation. My questions are to maintenance. One of the potential costs is the cost of doing work orders and maintenance. Apparently, there's an inability of custodians to do minor repairs in schools. For example, shelves, patches, paint a hole, leaking faucets. And the reason I say that is apparently a custodian has to put in a work order to put in a shelf bracket for a sagging shelf, as an example. A principal mentioned that she might have a leaky faucet that's leaking for a couple of years when she would have done that in her house herself. What is... what do we have in place to decrease the need for work orders and having a higher-paid person coming in and doing a job, perhaps in overtime? And I've got one other question related. What controls do we have in place for overtime? Do supervisors, some supervisors work more overtime than their subordinates? And what are we doing to control that?
On your first note, Mr. Armwood, one of the things that we see very clearly is that there's an overlap and redundancy in the tasks that are being done by both departments. So, what we're looking at doing is moving towards, an example would be is if a carpenter is going out to put up a shelf and that shelf needs to be painted, either the painter goes with the carpenter so it can be done at that one time opposed to sending somebody back out on an overtime run to have to do it the next day or being put onto a work order to have to get done. So, I think the simplest way to explain it is knowing that there are some redundancies in the work that's currently being done and how we could effectively do it on a touch at one time opposed to having to send someone back out to touch it again.
Mr. Armwood, if I could add to that as well. One of the things that Mr. Dawson told you at the beginning of the presentation is that we have made the decision to reorganize and combine plant ops and maintenance. And it's for that very reason because we see the redundancy in the work as well. And so, in an effort to streamline and also be more efficient, we are streamlining that department as well and having one singular objective. But the other thing is that a lot of times what you've described is an issue also with parts and supplies. And so, because the person didn't actually have the bracket or the parts or the supplies and they would have to order, they would have to put a work order in. And I think that's a lot of the reasons that we had so many work orders. And a lot of them are not necessarily things that are systemic or that a building would actually need, but they were very small items. And that's why we decided to vet those work orders using the thirty-sixty-ninety. So, for thirty days, we vetted those work orders to make sure there weren't duplicates, that there weren't old work orders that should have been purged from the system. And that's the process that we're going through now, making sure that we're cleaning out those work orders as well. So, what you see in terms of redundancy, we saw as well.
Well, more to the point, are we hiring custodians? Because in my mind, a custodian is more than a sweeper. A custodian should be a person who has minimal skills, at least to, you know, a shelving sagging shelf does not require a paint job. It requires a screwdriver and putting in a bracket, I mean just screwing it up. Or a faucet. Those type of minimal repairs are probably best done for a cost basis and a timeliness basis at the school level rather than reporting back to the central office for every little thing. And we need custodians who have those skills.
Right. And I think if you talk to the plant ops department and the custodians, they'll tell you that they do much of that work. As a matter of fact, one of our ideas next year is to have a training facility. So, we're providing that type of training for our custodians so that they're able to do more of the work onsite without the help of either an outside contractor or calling in a maintenance personnel as well.
And what about overtime control?
The... I start. The overtime control is something that's looming very large over the system, especially in this department and has been for quite a while. We are looking at better ways to schedule the work that is being done. We're looking at better ways to determine when the work gets started that needs to be done. So, the elementary idea about it is when does the work get started? When the staff goes out to the school? Do they start soon as they get there? So, we're really looking at that. The overtime, it's usually a lot is incurred on emergency calls, which is in the middle of the night at three or four o'clock when the boiler is down and we have to send a crew out there at night. Or on the weekends when a crew has to go out. So, that overtime really is unavoidable because of the nature of the emergencies that arise. What we can control is the scheduled time that our employees are doing, the scheduled time that they're due to be at their location, when they start, when they finish, and doing a better job of tracking and monitoring. The overtime we can control.
Mr. Armwood, in addition, we also have an overtime task force that Business Services is helping us with. And we're looking at two particular items, not only deployment, meaning the classification of the person that completes the overtime. Because of course, a chief building supervisor would be a more costly person in terms of overtime than a building cleaner. But we're also looking at contractual services as well. So, you'll see recommendations and we've been working with every department that actually accrues overtime to make sure that we are working on streamlining and also minimizing that process as well.
Do we have limits on how much overtime each position can make?
No, we do not.
Is that something that we should be looking at?
We'd have to negotiate that as a part of our agreement with our collective bargaining units.
Thank you.
Mr. Burrows.
Thank you for all the work that you've been doing. I had a question with contracts. And you were in the room earlier when we talked about the bill that would require us to put our contracts online. Can you talk about the percentage of minority business that we award our contracts to? And also, the amount of people who live in the county that get our contracts?
The Office of Purchasing and Supply Services actually tracks that. A recollection is that we consistently exceed the goals for both the state and the county of thirty-five percent. And they were the ones that tracked that information.
The last report we sent to the state, we were at forty percent for this fiscal year. But, Mr. Burrows, in our CIP FAB meetings, I provide updates on all MBEs, not just for school construction, but all MBE contracts in the district.
And how many of those, of the general contract number, how many of those people live inside the county?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but that's in the report. So, I will get with Mr. Miles and we can get that information to you guys.
I would be interested in seeing or hosting a workshop with the board or, you know, just us, of teaching people in the county how to go after school system contracts. A lot of people in the county have no idea of how to approach the school system. And I think that could be very beneficial in supporting, you know, people that live in the county.
So, we're always open to more ideas on how to attract vendors to work with our district. I know that in purchasing, Mr. Miles does host a series of workshops for all vendors, not just minority or local vendors. But we will, what I'll do is I'll have him write up what it is we're currently doing. And we'll certainly welcome any additional ideas the board has to help us get information out to the business community.
Thank you.
Ms. Higgins.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Taylor. It's very helpful information. I guess I just have, I have had minimal experience, but some experience, with construction of a building. And it was my understanding that it was pretty standard to have a change order percentage of ten percent. And I heard you talking about looking for a goal at five percent change order process. Could you comment on that?
Certainly. An acceptable change order rate varies by client, by building type. But we have set a goal, we want to do better than we have been doing. So, when we looked at our change order rate from about a year or so ago and saw that it was, it wasn't double digits, it wasn't ten percent, but it was five and a half percent is what we identified. The board felt we could do better and we agreed. And so, we have been trying to get that change order rate down as far as possible. Very briefly, the change orders can occur, one reason is when there isn't sufficient discussion ahead of time about what you want for a building. So, we took that on as a challenge to make sure we got more people in the school system involved, more stakeholders involved in discussions to make sure we have captured all of the different desires, all the different needs, aspirations so that we can come up with an excellent facility so that when we bid that to a contractor, we're not making changes after the fact.
Isn't it unrealistic and not helpful to go to a zero percent change order process? Because when you are doing the building, there are things that come up that legitimately need to be changed. You don't want to have, not make a change, which will then hurt the construction of the building ultimately or the use of the building.
That's true in that I think the lowest number possible is a good goal. In the state, for example, allocates two and a half percent for change orders through LEAs. So, they accept the idea that there are change orders. The one area that I think is the most challenging is the unforeseen conditions. If you're doing a new building, you dig into the ground, you don't know if there might be rock down there and rock is a lot different than soil. Also, if there's bad soils that cannot support a building, they have to be taken out and replaced. So, it's true that there's always going to be some, but we want to make sure that the change orders are only those things that could not have been avoided.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris.
I just want to add on to the change order discussion. I do actually support the idea of making sure, of setting a goal of having it as low as possible. And I do understand that some things happen. But really, I think what upsets the board is when it's something that was oversight. If we got to draw the bathroom, you know that, you know, you know that state regulation says you have to have five bathrooms in every school, but you drew four. You know, something like that, I think really makes the board upset. So, I like, I like the, I can't, I like where you're going with change orders and having it as low as possible saves money because there's a lot of things that we want to see, we want to see get improved in our school building and every penny counts.
And Mr. Harris, if I can add, the measure that we're putting in place to reduce that because we know it's a concern of the board is having the on-call architects and engineers to help us do better with looking at that before it goes out and doing a better job of getting the details firmed up so we're not going back and having to change it on behalf of what we may have had an oversight of. So, that on-call is going to help us a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. As we move forward, can we take plant ops, which appears to be next in your lineup, and then take safety and security together without the break?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Height, Dr. Coleman Potter. My name's Carl Belcher and I'm the Director of Plant Operations. Plant operations exist to provide clean, healthy, and safe work environments for our students and administrative personnel throughout the school system. We provide this environment by providing four key core services. Those core services are custodial services, preventive maintenance, facility usage coordination, and pest control services. To those core services involve but are not limited to doing some of these things. On a daily basis, we clean over seventeen million square feet. We provide boiler operation training for our custodians. And I should add that we operate and maintain those bores and HVAC systems. We schedule the custodial staff in conjunction with the needs of the schools. We promote and manage our integrated pest management program. I like to highlight the word promote because it's part of our responsibility to go out and explain the why and the where for, the do's and the don'ts for reducing our pest problems. We're also responsible for or part of our emergency response team. We are onsite if there's an emergency, a gas leak, a water leak, whatever. We control and process facility use. We process over three thousand applications per year for use of our facilities by outside organizations and civic groups. And we repair and maintain the equipment that we use to clean our schools and maintain our grounds. We do all of this with, we have an FTE count of twelve hundred and seventy-two and a half people. I did show how that's broken down on the previous slide. You may notice that some of those positions have zeros after them. That means that those positions have been cut already in this year's budget. Our annual budget is a little under $10 million. But this annual budget does not include our school operating resources. Part of the twelve hundred and seventy-two FTEs is almost twelve hundred FTEs that are school-based. These are the custodians and of course, we have that dual reporting relationship between the schools and plant ops. With the school operating resources, that annual budget is around $80 million. On our key performance indicators, under custodial services, we're on target for both of our objectives. The first is having fire inspections on a quarterly basis. Our goal was fifty percent. And the goal is fifty percent, not a hundred percent because this was an objective added midway through this year. And so, we missed our first couple of quarters. But however, we did get some inspections done in those first couple of quarters and that's why our year-to-date is fifty-eight percent. As far as our scoring, I'm proud to say that we are at eighty-nine point five percent. That is eighty-nine and a half percent of our schools scored seventy or above. And this is a real increase. And we attribute this increase to such things as getting the word out that it is a goal. We're living up to our performance management goals. We also develop action plans for our low-scoring schools. If a school scores below sixty, we develop an action plan. And those action plans can include everything from personnel changes, schedule changes, equipment changes, process changes. We also have been affected by... We also have been affected by tying this clinic score into our disciplinary actions. For example, if someone's up for a disciplinary action, we may defer disciplinary action with a caveat that if your score in your area doesn't increase by 20 points by the next inspection, you will get a disciplinary action. And this has been very effective. I should also point out that we will finish our next round of inspections next week. And normally, we experience a decline in the scores during the winter months, simply due to the fact that, well, there's a lot of dirt and debris tracked in with the, with the snow and ice. We are also on-target with our pest control KPI. Last year, we had over 1,500 reported pest sightings, if you will. Our target this year is 1,440, and we're on-track year-to-date having 695. We're also on-track with reducing the costs per hour to provide coverage for facility use. Our target is $16.67 per hour, and so far, year-to-date, we're at $17.21 per hour. However, we are at risk with our KPI of repairing our equipment. We had a target of repairing all our equipment within eight days. At the present time, year-to-date, we're experiencing an average of 10.7 days. We're developing a plan of action. The first one is an old one, and although we have made some progress on improving our switch-over procedures between summer grass cutting and winter leaf collection and snow removal, there are still some improvements that need to be made. We also put in place a plan of action to solicit and cross-train custodians to serve as mechanic fill-ins. So far this year, we've had a rash of extended sick leaves. We've had people out simultaneously for numerous weeks at a time. However, we are proud of our, some of our accomplishments. Highlighted on those accomplishments is our collaborative hiring and promotion policy, and this is in collaboration with our local 400. We develop and implemented policies and procedures to just improve how we move people around. We, our objective was to get rid of a lot of the subjectivity, favoritism, and nepotism in the hiring and promotion process. And so far, this is, this has been very helpful. We are reducing a lot of the complaints and a lot of the needs to transfer people. We're also very proud of the fact that we, we clean the schools during the summer, despite the fact that we had a four-day work week, and we had furlough days on Friday. And we also had, I think, an unprecedented number of schools that had ongoing activities during the summer. Those activities included curriculum activities. We also had CIP projects and major repair projects. I'll now turn the mic over to our safety officer. Or do you have questions? I thought we were going to go.
I have not had the pleasure to meet some of you. Hello, my name is Eric Walker, and I truly am the safety officer for Prince George's County Public Schools. My office supports the third strategic priority established by the superintendent, which very clearly states "safe and supportive schools." And in that, we, our office actually assists in creating a safe school environment where students and teachers are able to focus on instruction without distraction. This is what we do. So obviously, we evaluate the current safety conditions in schools, be it inside as well as outside, on the grounds and in the physical facility, and that does include the playground areas as well as the other outdoor facilities. We take specific actions to eliminate the hazards for accident prevention procedures, emergency and natural disaster procedures, bloodborne pathogen exposure assistance with health services. I must ultimately say right here that obviously, this office could not function without collaborating with all of the other departments and divisions within the system, as well as the other outside agencies. And I'll take time out and identify just a few when I get to that side. So we also develop staff and student safety consciousness and say, with in-service training, fire prevention techniques, and we assist the transportation department with transportation programs. We establish responsibility for safety inspections, and here's where we deal with quite a few of outside agencies, and I'll list just a few as we move through the presentation. We also coordinate with the occupational safety and health for monitoring of employee safety. The safety office collaborates with various departments and outside agencies throughout the county to provide technical assistance that creates positive outcomes to provide safe and supportive schools. Some examples of that, and as you look through the presentation, you see fire drills. Every time you hear about the safety office, you hear about fire drills. But some of the other examples that we do throughout collaboration is safe walk routes for schools, coordinating with the crossing guard unit, protective equipment and clothing for our maintenance and plant operations staff, installation and creation of sidewalks, installation of fences, assessing adequate lighting, whether we need additional buses or not, coordinating with the state as well as Department of Public Works in putting in additional signage in street infrastructure, roadway infrastructure, safe practices, office relocations, I'm still talking about the safety office. Emergency plants, fire lane compliance, parking surfaces, playgrounds, play equipment, chemical storage, as well as chemical disposal for our science classes through the state program. With that, we do coordinate with all of the interior departments to include the risk management office, food service, all of the area offices, health services, special education, and the ADA compliance office. We coordinate with quite a few outside agencies as a direct liaison for the superintendent and the deputy superintendent, which obviously, the Prince George's County Crossing Guard Unit. I don't know how many parents have very glaringly shared that crossing guards do not come through the safety office, but we coordinate and talk to them almost every other day. So the State Highway Administration, Department of Public Works and Transportation, the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission for playground equipment, the Office of Emergency Management, the Fire Department, and the Office of Homeland Security. So our key performance indicator, and here's where we get back to that fire drill, because that always comes up, whether it's PMAP, DISMAP, whatever we're talking about. So here, we are on-target to meet the 100% fire drill completion rate, but to date, we're at 77%. And some of the critical outcomes for having the fire drills, one, very glaringly shared with all the principals that we practice the emergency plan, so that's the first thing. But second, we create a rapid system to account for students and staff, and also on the exterior of the building, they get an opportunity to identify evacuation assembly points to assist in accounting for the students around the school. Accomplishments to date by the safety office, and I'll keep this very, very brief and very streamlined, inclusive of the slide that's up, but the safety office website is ongoing and provides a rapid resource for schools and staff. You get an opportunity, you can visit it, and on it, there's a little drop-down menu that if you truly have a critical question or critical issue within the school, around the school, you can send it directly to me, and I'll get it immediately. So the schools I invite are visited at least twice a year to assess the storage of flammable and hazardous materials by the safety office, that's one, the fire department, and the other directors assigned to supporting services. This practice has assisted with immediate mitigation of hazards. Participation in asbestos medical monitoring program of the eligible employees is approximately 95%. This screens against asbestos exposure. Participation in the respiratory protection program of the eligible employees is 100%. This provides respiratory protection when cleaning boilers and conducting other work that require respiratory protection. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Ms. Boston?
Well, first, Mr. Walker, I just found out that all of these things that you listed, that the safety department do, you do all of that. I'm just amazed, so, and I really want to-
No, 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 but we don't, no, no, remember, I mentioned collaboration, and I'm just going to take a second, because we have over 18,340 safety officers in Prince George's County. Yes, ma'am. Because it's everyone's responsibility to provide safety for these children within the school system. So that's why I'm so glad I have the largest staff, same-staff superintendent act.
We want to clone you, but I want to thank you for all that you do. I really appreciate that. Under plant operations, I have one question. Of the 1,272 full-time employees, are, well, are these positions or are these actual employees? Are these, all these positions are filled at the present?
Those are positions. Currently, we have, we have four positions that are-
That are not filled. Do you project any of your, so you subtract the four people from the positions from the 1,072, do you, do you see, or have you had conversation with people that are maybe eligible to retire this year that are, that will have some vacancies coming in your position?
Not at this time, but we, as part of our plan to effect cuts that are there on the table, we plan to do those cuts mostly through attrition. And we do have quite a few folks that are eligible that have had 30-plus years of service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. Ms. Higgins?
Yes, thank you very much. Actually, I have a couple of questions for the safety gentleman who has 18,000 employees. Hi. My questions have to do with the overall structure of safety in supporting schools. And I know that we are often or sometimes challenged by that with large fights that are occurring, particularly in the high schools, although in some of the middle schools, and also regarding the gang issue. Could you talk about how we're proactively addressing that, and how if a fight occurs in the school, how many staff we have on-site, and what's the action plan to address that?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, respectful, but I have to defer that to the security side of the house.
Oh, is that the next group?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm so sorry. Yes, we can wait. The question's coming.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins, and thank you both for your presentations. I have to say that my parents are in North Carolina. My stepdad is a custodian in Wade County Public Schools. And one of the things that he notably pointed out to me was that in looking, they tend to follow us online a little bit every now and then, don't know why. But he said, did I read correctly that you guys were talking about cutting custodians in Prince George's County? And so, you know, we do recognize the work is, it's hard work, it's work that's necessary, and it's work that's appreciated. And I certainly had to tell him to just keep following us to see what happens, but he works in a school district that's also struggling, so thank you for all you do.
All right, next up is security.
Good afternoon. I'm Greg Starr. I'm the Assistant Supervisor for Security Services. And basically, what I want to tell everybody is that, whoa, there we go. Our mission statement is to provide school security operations, electronic surveillance, criminal history checks, and special investigations to the students, staff, and the community and the schools, and in hopes of, you know, impacting student achievement. We basically, our goal is to ensure a safe and secure environment that's conducive to learning through counseling with the kids, electronic surveillance to help us with our investigations, conduct criminal background checks on all the staff and volunteers, chaperones, mentors, and everyone else that comes in contact with our children. Things that we do, again, we investigate all criminal and administrative offenses that occur on school property that are violations of Maryland law and violations of the board policies. We install, we maintain, and we replace all the intrusion alarms. We install and maintain all the video surveillance systems that currently the school system has in place, and we also control all building access for all facilities 24/7. Our office is open weekends, 365 days a year. We provide criminal background checks and fingerprint services for potential employees, volunteers, substitutes, and as I said, everyone else that comes in contact with the kids. We provide liaison services with local police departments, departments of Social Services, the State's Attorney's Office, and all offices, administrative offices throughout the county. Our key performance indicators, one of our indicators was we're trying to reduce the time it takes for a criminal background to come back from the Criminal Information System and the Federal Bureau of Investigation. Typically, it started out at about 78 days, because everything's going green, and our contractors who we use for doing fingerprints and the background checks now use a computerized fingerprint system. It cuts out on a lot of letters that were mailed back and forth to update information and to gather alerts that are sent to us when issues come up with staff, parents, or whatnot. So now, our original target was down to 60 days. We've actually, we have, we're on-track with that target, 43 days at this point. We're trying to increase our electronic monitoring in all the elementary and middle schools. Every high school has a, has a complete system. Many of the larger high schools have multiple computer systems, excuse me, electronic systems for camera surveillance. We've now completed, all the middle schools have a minimum of one computing, monitoring system, and our goal over actually the next five years, we're going to work with CIP to try to get the monies to go ahead and make sure that every elementary school has at least one computerized electronic system as well. To date, we were trying, we started out the year with 90 in systems in the middle and elementary schools. We were only to, able to install nine systems so far this year, so that's why it looks like we are in a warning for that. We hope that toward the end of the school year, some of the principals will come up with assistance with our office in purchasing some of the equipment. There's a lot of times what we do is if you purchase some of it with our, you know, minimal budget that we have, we can supply you with everything else. A lot of times, when they build a brand-new school, part of the capital improvement program to budget for the camera systems also pays for the actual cost of the employee going in and taking, putting the systems in place. But when we do a system here in the school system, or when we update a school, all your basically, the price tag that you actually see is just for the materials. We don't throw in the cost of the manpower for installing the system. So it's a little cheaper if we actually put the systems in ourselves. Currently, this school year, we've put in, like I said, we've put in 60 electronic surveillance systems throughout the entire school system, and a total of 368 cameras so far this year on all those systems. What are our accomplishments to date? Well, knowing that the Safe School Act of 2010 is coming upon us, we've been working closely with the Office of Student Engagement and Judge Nichols from the Circuit Court to put together a gang education and prevention unit. We started last year with one of our investigators, trained the gentleman to go in, and he's talked to about 2,600 students in the elementary, middle school level so far. As a matter of fact, today, he and another investigator are at some training with the state to do, train the trainer programs- state to do, train the trainer programs, so they can come back over the summertime and in the fall and train all of our investigator counselors in the gang education and prevention program that will come into play with the Safe Schools Act of two thousand ten. We're also implementing security procedures, as you know, here in the boardroom. There's now a panic button system. We've added some additional security piece. We have implemented security procedures at all of our facilities, office facilities around the county as well. We now, we took over the staff identification system here, so make sure all of our staff have IDs for coaches who also work with athletics. We have also, as I said, installed the sixty electronic surveillance systems around the school. So that's basically what we do, and I'll take any questions if you have them.
Thank you very much. I think Ms. Higgins gets to go first.
Thank you very much. My question has to do with student fights, large numbers of students being involved in fights, that that's happening on a consistent basis at several schools. How do you address that? How do you address it proactively? And then, secondly, to talk specifically about gang issues that are occurring in our schools.
Well, certainly with the large fight situations, you know, we would take some of our area investigators. And the way this is broken down is you have two investigator counselors who are certified police officers assigned to every high school, and any number of security assistants who are non-certified police officers to assist our security staff in, you know, hallways, prevention of fights. They do cafeteria duty, bus duties, situations like that. If we know a situation is coming down ahead of time, we'll certainly augment that school with additional staff we'll pull from different areas. And certainly through the investigation of those types of situations, the surveillance cameras are definitely a big part of our tools in which we use to identify those who are involved and those who are not involved.
Are there specific schools, are you tracking in terms of where schools, those activities are occurring more than others?
Not really. I mean, we track them with our incident reports that we prepare all the time, which is based on Administrative Procedure 10201, which are disruptive acts that occur in the schools. So we do track them by way of incident report. And what we've done is we've gone to the University of Maryland, and we've gotten a couple of student assistants to help us with informational data that we're using at our office. The internship program is basically what we have from the University of Maryland, two students out of their criminal justice program.
Ms. Higgins, also, the information that we collect daily can be tracked because each day, there's a daily log sent from security. So we do have information on all schools that have that problem, so it would be easy to track that information to schools.
Yeah, I guess I just wonder if we are using that information, if we identify certain schools having more problems, more consistent, you know, I'm talking forty to sixty kids being involved in fights, whether we're tracking that information in a way that law enforcement, I know I've said time and time again, law enforcement can't be our only tool. So what other tools are we doing in schools where we know that these are more of an issues to be proactive to address the issue long-term? Is that a question for you?
Yeah, Ms. Higgins, I'll take a, I'll respond.
Thank you.
One of the things that we, that is positive about this process, and this process that we call PMAP, but it really is a monitoring tool based on all of the data we collect, is that it allows us to look at information and break that information out so that it's informative, so that we can take action to address things that emerge through those data. So historically, we've been measuring inside of security things like the number of cameras in a building. Where cameras are, we understand that monitoring is important, but they, we also want security to be responsive to the incidents that are occurring in the building. So we're actually working on redeploying based on data we're collecting through that process. And we, you see some of these key performance indicators, and these are evolving, but they're evolving so that they're the most informative and the most helpful to schools. And so often, the police will use incidents of crime to determine where they will deploy more people.
Right.
And we're taking that same approach. So we're looking, you heard Mr. Starr talk about their reports, and we're looking at those reports to determine, okay, where in the school are these incidents occurring? That means that's a deployment issue. And then, how many incidents are occurring? Because that could be a shifting of staff. So we could move them from one place, place A to place B, if there are more problems at place B. But we're using the information we're collecting in our statting process to really make those determinations.
Is there any indication that those schools that have the positive behavioral programs are having less incidents in regards to fighting?
And Ms. Golson, I see her shaking her head, but I-
Yes, through our pre-PMAP information, we do have data that shows that, and our high school's suspension rate has decreased because of PBIS.
And fights?
And fights, yes.
Okay. And do we have a list, or do you know offhand which schools do in fact have those?
Yes, we have a list that we can send you.
Okay, appreciate that. And then, could you speak to the complicated issue of gangs and how we're addressing it in a proactive way?
Well, as I said, the Safe School Act of two thousand ten is gonna require every school system to come up with board policy. So we're working with student engagement on that. But Judge Nichols brought this to our attention about a year, year and a half ago, and asked us to start looking at some of this stuff. So that's why we've, we're training two people right now to really go into the schools at the young age, the middle school and the elementary schools, to talk to those kids about the gang issues, talk to them about the bullying issues, because we also get involved in doing some of the investigations with regard to bullying. So, you know, we're in there talking to the kids, and that's why the Train the Trainer program that they're working at today is gonna be good to come back and give all of our sixty-six investigators the ability and to go out and speak to these kids and to get them to understand exactly what they're doing. It's tougher on the high school level right now. Our investigators do speak at the student assemblies, and we do ask them to come and talk to us, you know, one-on-one if they know issues are going on. But we find that we have a lot more kids in the middle school, oddly enough, that are coming out.
Right.
And they actually want to see that those gangs and those problems eliminated from their schools. And at the elementary level, if we start them early on, by the time they get to that early secondary level, I think they'll be more adept to come forward and tell us that there are problems, so they can go ahead on with their education.
And I guess I just would also encourage you to include the parents in those discussions as partners in regarding to the gang prevention activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Mr. Armwood?
Thank you, sir. I know you have a very difficult job. Very briefly, on gangs, I realize one of your first jobs is to get the administrators to admit there are crews, gangs, or whatever they choose to call themselves in some of our schools. I've talked to some of your officers, and that's always been an issue, getting some schools to admit that they're in there. But more to the questions. First of all, are sheriffs being replaced by county police?
I do not have that information.
We don't know that, Mr. Armwood. I have no information on whether or not that's happening or why that would be happening.
Okay, I stopped by one of our deputies one day who was concerned that they were being taken out and being replaced by county police. I guess I'll ask Sheriff Hyde what's happening.
Yeah, I have no knowledge of that.
Legislatively, they're not. So at this, what would have to happen, if they were to switch back to police officers instead of the sheriff's deputy, there would need to be new legislation to do that. But under the state law right now, deputies are there.
Okay, good. With remote monitoring and sensors, I want to ask a question. Why are we paying full-time employees for remote monitoring instead of contracting remote monitoring out? It seems like that would be a very efficient use of time and probably cheaper. I use central monitoring for my alarm system at home, and I know other systems do use central monitors at remote sites for remote monitoring. I realize you gotta have response.
We actually have that capability. It's called a central station right now. We do have the abilities to monitor all the new schools that we're adding on. We can monitor them live feed right from our office.
But we are monitoring them as opposed to contracting that service out and paying benefits. That's the question.
We could do an analysis on that, Mr. Armwood.
Yeah, that may be of benefit to us. Why do, why do we have the security investigators, sixty-six of them, and one hundred and twenty-six security assistants in the schools as a practical day-to-day matter? Most of their job overlaps. The security investigators out there with the SAs helping keep order in the school. We're paying security investigators substantially more than SAs. And if we made those more of an equal position, leveled it, would we realize a savings? What is the, what does a security investigator do that a security assistant could not do?
Well, the security investigator is a certified police officer through the state of Maryland, and he's commissioned through the state of Maryland to make arrests on school property. The security assistant is basically like a paraprofessional for the hallways. That's the best way I can put it. They're not certified. They get minimal training from us about eight hours a year. The investigator counselor position, they're mandated to have eighteen hours from the Maryland Police Correctional Training Commission. They have the ability to make the physical apprehensions on school property. The investigator counselors prepare all the written reports for expulsion hearings. Security assistants do not write reports. So that's kind of like the difference between the two bodies.
Okay. Now, the security assistant, though, still does not arrest in the school. They detain, but they do not arrest. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So we still have to call the sheriff or county police in to make the arrest?
No, that's incorrect. Our investigator counselors go to every school in this county. They do, if it's a situation of, let's say, an assault, and a parent wants the child charged because there's some type of injury, there's some type of restitution that's going to be ordered, then our investigator counselor would go out to the school. We can actually make the arrest at the school level. We can release the children to the parent from the school, so it keeps the county police on patrol on the street. And that was the reason why this was set up back in the early seventies. So, you know, we're kind of like a one-stop shop. We can do most of the processing right there. The only thing we can't do, and that we really need to have the deputy sheriffs or the county police come in, is for situations where there's involving some type of evidence that needs to be processed. We obviously can't process that type of evidence. But for the ninety-five percent of the types of incidents that go on, and I'm talking about criminal incidents, we can process them right there at the school, release them right to the parent. Our paperwork goes right to the Department of Juvenile Justice or down to the Commissioner's Office, District Court of Maryland, without taking the investigator counselors out of the school. If the county police took over for the investigator counselors or the deputy sheriffs, every time they make an arrest according to their policies and procedures, they would have to make a physical apprehension, take that student out of the building. So we kind of eliminate that. And then, again, if the school resource officer has to go out of the building to process his student or his arrestee, you're taking that body out of the building, and he's not there to protect the rest of the kids. So we can do most of our paperwork, ninety-five percent of our paperwork, right there at the school level.
With the security investigator, is, would it, have we considered having a dispatch system for fewer security investigators and having more security assistants in the schools? A lot of the schools have issues with not having enough bodies, the security assistants, to patrol the hallways and keep order, whereas a security investigator, from the skills that you've just stated, is somebody who's a specialist. And specialists could be dispatched as needed, have several schools as a responsibility instead of one being assigned to each larger school.
Well, we basically have two assigned to each of the larger schools, and we do have regional investigators that take care of, let's say, a cluster of schools. So they'll respond to the cluster of schools.
Okay.
And we have telephones, and that's about, that's about all we have right now. And they do respond as we call them during the day. So if we know that there's a situation at Northwestern or High Point, we call them on the radio and say, hey, we need additional backup, or we need additional services at those locations, and we'll send investigators to those schools. I guess a couple of years back, I guess the way that they determined staffing was generally just like they do with the assistant principals, about three hundred and fifty to one. You know, the numbers in the schools have changed over the course of the last couple of years, and we're certainly looking to redeploy some staff for the upcoming year.
Okay. And another question. Why do SAs not report to the principal instead of reporting to a central office?
They used to report to the principals, and back in two thousand and seven, there was an audit done, and the audit results were that they should report to security services for training purposes.
Can't trainings be provided, since principals have to supervise day-to-day operations and direct SAs as to where to go in the school, what specifically to do, and training is a central office function, that could not be provided separately? And what I'm driving to, we need to look at the numbers of security assistants and investigators to try to save money in those. But we need more security. I'm not trying to minimize the need for security, but can we do it in a smarter way with less top-heavy investigators and have boots on the ground, so to speak?
And, Ms. Armwood, and one of the things that, the answer to your question is, yes, and we should be looking at that in every category, even across security. And I think that the whole intention was to get the, I'm using your term, boots on the ground at the school, particularly around the issues that we were seeing when the audit was done. And part of why they began reporting to security was really because there was a misuse of security when it was more directly to the school. And we also had situations where evidence went missing and everybody was exposed to those types of, to those materials. And that's why the audit made a recommendation that we have security really come under a mechanism that was more focused on issues around student safety and security. With respect to your point about what we want individuals doing in schools, you're absolutely right. We don't want, we don't need more individuals in administrative functions. We need individuals who are building relationships with students and collaborating with principals.
Ms. Higgins?
Yes, actually, I don't have much to say beyond what Dr. Height was. I guess my, I think this issue is one that we are challenged in, in terms of providing a safe environment and consistently a safe environment. And I guess I would caution us to be careful about removing staff in order that we continue to move to reach this goal. Because part of the answer is going to be the relationships that we have, people have with individual children, and that's what's going to help us be successful in this goal. And so, cutting this particular section too severely is not going to get us where we want to be, so.
Thank you. And I would just add a comment, I guess, Dr. Height, as you work with staff to sort of create the, for lack of a better word, marketing around security in our school district, that we, how do we best deal with the pockets or those areas where it's perceived that kids aren't safe in certain parts of the county? That there's, I don't want to send my kid to this specialty program, even though I want this specialty program because it happens to be at this particular high school. And I think that goes also to what we talk about oftentimes, about where schools are located and how we might need to repurpose. And then, I really believe security can help us along those lines as we talk about safety and raising the bar, if you will, around safety at those perceived areas of discourse, if you will.
I agree, Madam Chair. And I think where we are responsive, first of all, to the needs of schools and to the security needs of students and families, I think that's the first part of that, showing that responsiveness. The second part is something that we talked about when we were in the legislative portion. And I think that sometimes individuals have perceptions of certain places throughout the county, and our data would suggest that those perceptions are not always reality. And I think as we make those types of data available to the public, I think that it will give information or insight into how our system- that it will give information or insight into how, um, our system and our security team are really trying to be proactive, number one, and responsive, number two, to the needs of principals, the needs of students, and the needs of families.
Thank you. I know we have very highly qualified security working in our system who are former police officers, retired police officers, et cetera. Mr. Burrows?
I just wanted to also thank you for the work that you do. Uh, the security, um, specialists in our schools are some of the, uh, some of the most mot, motivating, uh, forces behind our students, um, and they do work extremely, extremely hard, um, every day. And I wanted to ask about, uh, at one point, I'm not sure if, if it's still the practice now, that we would have, uh, se, security, SAs in the building, but then we would switch them because they, uh, became too familiar or too comfortable, they wanted to keep it fresh. Is that, is that still standard practice?
I, I don't know, I've never seen that.
Okay.
Unfortunately, never seen that. The only thing that we're looking at right now is, like I said, is, uh, staffing based on enrollment in the schools, but, uh, but no, I, I've not encountered that.
And I know Mr. Armwood already asked, um, my second question, and that was about, uh, the possibility of switching the sheriffs to the, um, police officers, and Ms. Jacobs said that that would have to be done legislatively, and that's not, um, up for consideration by this board at this time.
No, we just voted, as a matter of fact, last year to extend that process for, um, the sheriffs to remain in the, in the schools.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and my last question is, how does, what is the ni, the dynamic between the, uh, the SAs and the?
ICs, investigator counselors?
ICs, yes, because I talked to a, a security guard, uh, I talked to a IC, um, a few months ago, several months ago, um, and, and he mentioned that the ICs are not really over the SAs, and he thought that it would be a, a better structure for, uh, for him to, you know, run the security of the, of, of the building if he had the SAs, you know, directly, uh, under him, evaluating them, giving them tasks, that, that sort of thing. What, what are your thoughts, and where are we there?
Well, right now, it's a contractual issue. We, we can't supervise them, we can't, we can't control their leave and things, and that's, that's the contract part of it. But, uh, we certainly work as a team with the sheriff, with the investigators in the school, security assistants, and the administrative team to control each of those buildings. So if there are issues in different buildings, then really that team needs to go back and sit with the principal and try to come up with some other objectives, uh, some other goals, concentrate on certain areas that they're having problems with, and certainly if they give us a call, you know, we'll augment them with some additional people. I know we went through that at, at a couple of larger high schools earlier this year. Um, there are some schools that are still having some problems, but the sooner that the principal gives us a call, and especially with the investigators letting us know, you know, what's coming down the pike, um, with a little bit of intelligence, again, that counseling, that role, we, open door policy where the kids can come in and tell us what's going on, if the students tell us what's going on ahead of time, we can usually handle it with the staff that's currently available in the building.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Uh, they're really making an impact on the day-to-day lives of the students.
Thank you.
Mentors and coaches and, uh, advisors, um, so thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows, and Mr. Starr, thank you. We know that you've just jumped in both feet, um, in this position to, to help us in security. And I would also be remiss if I didn't say that there are also some fabulous retired corrections people who are working in security. They'd kill me, um, if I didn't mention them. So my colleagues who have decided to leave that side and have come over to help kids, I very much appreciate them as well. Um, so we're gonna move into transportation next. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, extinguished members of the board, Dr. Height, and your extinguished executive cabinet. My name is Derek Holmesley, and I am here to represent the Transportation Department. Our mission statement, um, I won't read, I think it's clear and cut and clean and straight to the point about what we are trying to do for the students in Prince George County, uh, schools in conjunction with, uh, supporting services and Dr. Height and the school board's children come first. So what we will do is we will continue to stay along the lines of what we need to provide for our children and what the school board wants us to do. Full-time employees, when, when I saw this slide, I smiled a little bit because you don't know how many times in transportation, uh, get Mr. Holmes to just put somebody on the bus and drive a bus. Well, as you see, the FTEs are exemplified here on the map, on, on the page here, will show you that it's more than just putting someone on the bus. There's a lot of people that are involved in putting that person on the bus that day. So that's what is needed in a perfect school system for Prince George County's transportation to move those buses every day, okay? This is what we do. I wanna point out three specific checkmarks under this topic to, to expound upon. Uh, the first one being provide transportation in emergency situations. Uh, transportation does just more, just more than just transporting, uh, students to and from school and to the athletic event and so on and so forth. Uh, there's, emergency situations can include, um, days like where Mr. Dotson may get a call from a plant maintenance director, and he'd say, well, Mr. Dotson, this school is closed today. So Mr. Holmesley will get a call from Mr. Dotson and say, Laurel High School doesn't have power. So then at that point in time, well, maybe not Laurel High School, but let's say Laurel Elementary. And at that point in time, I have to look at the alternative list and find out what the alternative school for Laurel Elementary is, and I have to prepare my staff to move those children to that alternative school, most likely would be Laurel High School. We would do that in the AM, and we would do that in the PM, and we would also do that for the walkers. Um, we would have to go back and get the walkers from Laurel High School and bring them back to Laurel Elementary so that they could walk home from their home school. Another example would be, and, and this is probably something that hasn't come up in a long time, and I hope it doesn't, but over my fourteen years in the department, we were also instrument, instrumental in moving children during bomb threats. When we get bomb threats at school, we would set up, uh, the most expeditious way to send buses to the school and get the kids either on the bus, if that's the safest haven at the time, or to move them away from the, uh, facility per the bomb squad or the police. Secondly, I would like to touch bases on provide radio communication from six AM to six PM. We have our own communication dispatch center in the Transportation, uh, Department that holds all our information in reference to our GPS system, um, and our radio communications, actually with the school bus drivers themselves. This is where the information comes in to, uh, the Transportation Department if a bus has an emergency, if they're in an accident, if a student is hit by a bus or hit by another car. All that information is disseminated to that command center in between those hours. After six o'clock PM, we switch our radio system over to Channel One, which is, um, manned by security after hours. So at six o'clock, the buses don't stop running, they continue to run to do their assignments, but any activity that happens after that will be reported to security. And if it's, um, emergency-type situation, security will contact me or the appropriate staff to help them solve the situation. And lastly, provide classroom and behind-the-wheel training. And I really wanna spend a little bit of time talking about this one, because this is what is very, very important to our school bus drivers on a daily basis, to provide safe transportation to and from school for our children. So one of the, the first things that we did just recently in collaboration with, uh, the Risk Management Department, was that we went out and looked for the most cutting-edge DVDs on the most current training, uh, for school bus drivers. We have obtained those DVDs, and we are now in the process of implementing those DVDs into our training process. Uh, in our training process, school bus drivers historically went to class for a week, and they received twenty-two hours of classroom training, or, or training in general, before we put them out at the bus lot level and let them drive a bus. Now with the, the newfound information, we're gonna up that training from twenty-two hours to twenty-four point five hours in the classroom before they're put out at the bus lot to even drive a bus in a real-life situation. For bus attendants, they usually attend a one-day class, which was, um, I guess a cumulative of ten hours. We're gonna stretch that to a two-day class over three, thirteen point five hours, okay? And by doing this, we're hoping that the outcome of this is gonna be better-trained employees that we're putting on the school bus to deal with our children with the most updating, cutting-edge techniques to deal with pupil tran, uh, pupil and pupil transportation, okay? Uh, one other thing that we do is, we call it DIP, but it's called the Driver Improvement Program. And we do this twice a year, once for the northern region, uh, during the fall, and then, secondly, for the south during the spring. And this is a course or, or an obstacle-type course that we set up, and we send every driver in our fleet through this DIP program. And through this DIP program, they have to pass it, or they have to be able to maneuver their bus sufficiently for enough, enough for us to feel as though that they're doing what they need to do on the road. And this gives them the opportunity to not become complacent, to refresh themselves with their everyday maneuvering of the school bus and other safety, uh, rules and regulations that they are responsible for. Now, the desired outcome of all of this improved training is, and I will talk about this term a little bit later in my presentation, is to reduce the, the, uh, influx of preventable accidents in the department, and I'll explain that a little later. On our fact sheet, not gonna speak on each fact, but I would like to speak about, um, all bus drivers in attendance must participate in nine safety meetings per year. This is, uh, per coma, but our standard of nine is higher than what the state is asking us to provide our drivers. We go beyond the call of duty to cover a little bit more with them, again, to keep them updated and so that they don't get complacent of coming to work every day doing the same job, I have this, and then they forget something, like leave a child on the school bus after they parked their bus unattended, okay? Now, for drivers, I will say, the state only asks for six safety meetings, um, for, for permanent drivers. For sub-drivers, they only have to have five safety meetings. We are requiring nine, okay? The next point is very, very important, and I can't drive this home anymore than I'm going to today. I'm trying to be as explicit as I can. All bus drivers hold a CDL and require annual physicals and drug and alcohol testing. This is a federally mandated, uh, requirement of the department. If we do not concur, there's an audit done on this department for those subjects. If we do not concur, they can, the feds can shut down Prince George County Transportation totally. So this is very, very important. Um, I will speak to this again, again, later on in the, uh, presentation, because there's some things that we have put in place so that we can make sure that we stay on top of the federal regulation, okay? Our key performance indicators, and this particular key performance indicator, um, I will explain why we are all way, already reaching a hundred percent, is because we don't have a choice, but this particular key performance indicator is type A and type B, uh, school bus inspections. A type A inspection is an annual inspection. Uh, type B, uh, inspection is an inspection that we go through three times a year. In these inspections, the, um, state trooper from the MVA, they're present with our central garage staff, making sure that everything on that bus, from a window to a steering wheel, is working. And you have to understand that if one of those is not working, just taking a screwdriver, screwing in a screw is written down as a repair. All of these repairs have to be made before that school bus can go back on the road, and you get thirty days to make those repairs. So you see the hundred percent because that school bus can't get back on the road until we make the repairs. So we make those repairs nonetheless. But I believe in the near future, probably within my next PMAP presentation, I'm going to remove this KPI because it's already a hundred percent and, and share something that I feel we need to get to a hundred percent. So we are currently doing, uh, the, the change request form with the project management team to change this particular KPI and move to one that we can show that we can do better in. This next KPI is the preventable accidents. We are at risk, and I wanna pause parenthetically right here for a moment, just so I can explain as, as thoroughly as I can what, uh, preventable accidents are, because I do know there's some quest, questions from the board in reference to this. Uh, preventable accident per coma is an accident that occurs when a driver, uh, comes in contact with a fixed object, another vehicle, a pedestrian, and it does not do everything in their power to avoid the accident. That is, in a nutshell, the definition of a preventable accident. Now, while we at risk, we have eleven hundred and seventy-six buses on the road every day, and they're transporting in the AM, they're transporting in the PM, and they also, we also have what you call mid-days. So by the time we finish transporting students, just for one day, probably within the one day, on an average, we have done five thousand trips that day. So the possibility, uh, of having preventable accidents is great. So, uh, what we're trying to do is put a plan of action in place to help our drivers do everything they possibly can do to avoid an accident. An accident where they get hit, we call that a non-preventable, but we don't, uh, really, we, we don't really, I guess, take the non-preventables into what you call accident review. Number one, because it's time-consuming, and we only do it if we can see a driver continuing to have non-preventables, then we thinking maybe something's wrong with you there too because you're having too many non-preventables. But one of the plan of action is accident review. Let me explain that quite, uh, shortly. The accident review is headed by the operation supervisor, which is the assistant to the director. This is where every person that has preventable accidents on their record, they have the opportunity, or it is mandatory now, that they have to come to accident review. The review board goes over the accident with that particular driver. They discuss, um, avenues or, or methods that could have helped the driver not have that accident. And usually at the end of the review, we ask that driver, what have you learned and what can you do to prevent yourself from being in that situation? Again, I won't even elaborate on some of the stories, I'll just move on. Anyhow, the next one is a classroom refresher course. That, that is inclusive of the new DVDs that I explained to you about, but this is all, also, uh, inclusive of a, uh, refresher course for those drivers who have had two or more preventable accidents in a twenty-four-month period. This has turned out to be, uh, quite enlightening for our drivers, because some of them come in, some are very cocky and arrogant, you can't tell them what they've done wrong, I don't need to do this, why am I coming to this class? And once we explain this, these, uh, new techniques to them, they leave out with a new understanding of how they could be a better bus driver, okay? So those are some of the plans of action that we have in place. Drive improvement program, which we've talked about already. Bus on bus, I, I have to give all that credit to my predecessor, Mr. Dotson, he started that under his directorship, and bus on bus obviously is what it is. If Derek Holmesley is driving a bus- If Derek Holmes is driving a bus and I hit Ms. Beck and she's driving a bus, she and I have to go and see the director because he needs to know why two big, bright, yellow buses hitting on each other, okay? Accomplishments to date. The three that I wanna really pay attention to today, uh, is the second one. Im- implemented the Operation Supervisor, Supervisor and Driver Trainer blitz to ensure all safety precautions are taken. Do you recall me explaining to you how important it is that CDL license holders have their credentials, okay? When we go on the school bus lots on these blitzes, and I invite you to come on out and join us, we go out there at six o'clock in the morning, and we check every driver's license of every driver, every DOT card of every doc- driver. We make sure that they're doing their pre-trip inspection of their bus before they pull that bus off the lot that day, and we just make sure everything that is supposed to be on the bus in reference to having a safe trip is there prior to them leaving the bus lot that day. And in this process, um, every now and then, we will find a driver who has not done their due diligence in informing us that they do not have the proper, um, credentials to board that bus that day. And when we find them, we pull them off the bus that day, and we, uh, give them an opportunity to get their credentials where they need to be. If they do not get their credentials where they need to be, they do not drive a school bus for Prince George's County anymore. So that is a very, very important one. Uh, we have implemented, uh, an employee disclosure statement for drivers and and attendants. Unfortunately, uh, in departments, people have personal lives that may not be conducive to what we want in our school system. So by them signing this statement prior to the school year starting, this binds them to come and tell us if they have had any criminal conduct that would reflect unfavor- unfavorably on Prince George's County Public Schools. And if they do not do that, and we find out about it, we deal with that employee accordingly. And last but least, um, in the communication, uh, center on the radio that I told you about when we talk to the drivers every day, we just implemented what we call Radio Identify. The Radio Identify is designed to improve radio adequate, meaning that that is for business, that is for emergencies, that is for accidents, what have you. We have drivers, unfortunately, that use that radio for, uh, clowning around or or not saying the proper things of what they're supposed to do. Now, when they click the radio and they say something obscene or something that shouldn't be said, their bus number flashes up on the Radio Identify, and I'm able to call that driver in and deal with that driver accordingly. So in a nutshell, that is our accomplishments, and Transportation will strive to continue to do the job that we do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm gonna actually start with a question that Mr. Harris asked me to ask, which, um, actually is gonna end up going to Dr. Height and Mr. Stansky because I think we were, we touched on it before. And it was around transportation in general. He was, uh, this is system oversight, but his question was relative to, um, how do we collaborate with the county in terms of looking at how many trans- transports we have to do a day? And then from a financial perspective, how can we collaborate with the county to assist in middle school and high schoolers riding the bus? So there you are, Mr. Harris's question.
Ask the last part again, Ms. Jacobs.
So the high school and middle schooler, school students, how can we collaborate with the county to have more of them ride the bus instead of have, so that our transportation...
Thank you.
Oh, yes, the bus, the county bus. You know, we couldn't come up with the name, so we called it the bus.
We we started, we started on this last year, right after the budget and, right after last year's budget, and we we worked with WAMADA, which is Metro, as you know, and they have a similar model, model in the district. So they had indicated to us that they, uh, have a desire to talk about that. We, it bogged down when we were able to get to the table, the individuals who run the county bus program, the bus, and it was really no desire on their part to have, um, what they term school-age children riding that bus. We will, we are working with, um, the leadership at the county to talk about whether or not it's a way to, first of all, they said they don't have enough, uh, buses to to transport, um, and then the second thing was just a concern about the behavior. We we're looking at that, um, especially in the areas where we have stops and Metro, and that's what we're looking for. We still have a vast, uh, part of the county that has no service either through the bus or through through Metro, so we would still have that. But we have been working with the county. We had a, um, we had a positive response from WAMADA, a negative response from the bus.
And, uh, Dr. Height, just just to add, um, there could be some COMAR-related issues that we're working with Andreas Dangan on in regards to risk and risk management. Um, the the way COMAR reads, um, you have to get an exemption through the state to, for public stu- school students to ride, uh, public transportation, and the only, uh, county in the state right now that has that exemption is Baltimore City. So we're working through Andreas's office to try to get the details of that COMAR, uh, regulation.
I ju- I just wanna add to that. Um, it's a letter that I just received yesterday from DPWT, and I'm gonna forward that to Mr. Dotson as well as to Dr. Height, uh, but it was a parent who was very, very disgruntled with the fact that there were some children already riding the T-18 from the bus, and they, I guess they had been rowdy, and he was very, very adamant. He wrote WAMADA, he wrote, wrote the bus, he wrote DPW. He did not want the children on the bus and was messing up his ride home, and, I mean, he just went on and on and on. So, uh, I'm sure we'll continue to look into it, but I'm gonna share that information with Dr. Height and Mr. Dotson.
Yeah, I think it would certainly take a cultural shift around, um, but we also know the community should help us with our kids and their behavior.
That's true.
Character building and things like that. Ms. Armwood?
My condolences.
Yep, I had to take him to school, and, uh, so I'm mad at you today.
I'm, I'm sure.
But not really, okay? I would've called if I really was. Um, are cameras on all buses now?
They are not on all buses. Um, we we have some, some buses that are equipped with cameras, some old, some new. The the old ones are cameras that, uh, when you turn the ignition on, they would start up, and they're actually at the front of the bus, and by now, the kids already know that's a camera box. So, uh, in Mr. Dotson's tenure, uh, he worked very hard to get a digital camera system, uh, which we're piloting, and, uh, we're moving towards trying to, you know, uh, get more efficient and new cameras on the bus. But yes, there are cameras on some of our buses.
And we're working towards getting them on all buses, is that correct?
Eventually. We we're running a pilot to see what what, how it works, and then, you know, we'll see where it goes from there, because that that is a cost issue too.
As we buy new bushes, buses, are we getting buses with padded backs and seat belts?
Um, as far as the seat belts are concerned, we don't buy buses with seat belts. We buy buses, uh, that pertain to what we call the co- compartmentalization or the egg carton syndrome, which means they build the high padded seats like you're asking about, and if a kid goes forward, they run into the back of that high carton cushioned seat, which in crash simulations has been better than seat belts because when they jerk forward and the seat belt jerks, because they're smaller than you and I, it can do more body damage than not having a seat belt.
Okay. Another question, do we use routing software to optimize our bus routes, i.e. UPS, uh, type software and so forth, that may have a bus driving, turn making all right turns to save gas, uh, as an example?
Yes, we we use what we call Trapeze, uh, through MapNet, and basically it routes the bus for us. Um, there are blitzes here and there, but we do have very, um, tenured staff that know how to go in and and make it right if it's it's not quite what it should be. But yes, we do use...
Is fuel optimization part of that?
Fuel optimization, yes. We we look at the route and we try to make the route as efficient as possible, therefore, you know, you burn less fuel.
Okay. And, well, that's all, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Armwood. Ms. Eubanks?
Hello, I have a couple of questions for you. The first would be, um, are there any, I'm sure there are, but what are the standards or guidelines for bus drivers, especially those who drive around our younger children, uh, to make sure that they've gotten all of the children that they should get, um, and and as well as those younger children not leaving the bus before it's time? Because I've run across both those situations.
Right, uh, that that has been a problem, unfortunately, this school year. Um, basically, what what happens is that a school bus driver is given a route, and the route speaks to stops that they're supposed to stop at, corners or what have you. The the only drivers that actually get students' names are special needs drivers or or drivers who transport children with special needs. They actually get the children's names, so they have a better chance every day of knowing exactly who gets on their bus by name. Uh, a regular, uh, a regular school bus driver pretty much only gets the list of students' names when problems arise, like overcrowdedness on the bus. Then we have to find out who's supposed to be on the bus by name. If your name isn't on that bus, you you go to your proper bus. Um, that is something that we're we're gonna have to work in conjunction with the school very closely with because, um, i- i- it's a team thing. I mean, we're gonna be proactive to try to curtail any child getting off at the wrong stop or not getting on the right bus, but it definitely entails the school working with us, and we just may just have to start providing the driver, you know, run sheets with names, and they're they're just gonna be responsible with trying to get to know their students. But that has been an an age-old problem in the Transportation Department. It just kinda got a little worse within the last year, so with a couple of incidents that we had, but, um, it it takes the two. It takes the school as well as just Transportation.
Ms. Eubanks, just to add, there there are two things that are, are zero tolerance in Transportation, is one is leaving a sleeping child on the bus, and two is allowing the child to get off the bus without the driver intervening to make sure. So we've we've raised the second to a higher elevation by letting drivers know that they have to be more responsive. It is a team effort, but our driver, uh, being the the last, last Prince George's County employee, uh, has a lot of responsibility, and they handle their responsibility quite well. So we raised that elevation to now it's a zero tolerance for for that happening.
Very good, because we 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 have been blessed that the situations have come out the way they have, but it really could've been other ways, and and I'm thankful for that. Uh, my second question would be, when it comes to the cameras on on the buses, I know just like with home security systems, you can get a dummy one, and the students won't know which one is an active camera and which one is a dummy one. Have we thought about doing that? That way on every bus, there will be something.
We've used that tactic too for for years now, uh, to, I I guess to outfit every bus again. I I will say in the older model buses, when we first embarked on camera uses, we would have a box, a dummy box, and we didn't have the money at the time to equip each one of those boxes with a live camera. But as the need came up or as the behavior at a particular school, uh, was was not what we wanted to be, then we would put a camera in that particular box and make sure that we could record the behavior. But we 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 are working on that, trying to get cameras in every buses because they do come in handy. We just used one, uh, the other day to to see something that we needed to see.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Eubanks. Ms. Johnson?
Dr. Colvin Potter, other than just speaking to, uh, food services, 'cause I had a, just a a little bit of tinkering about that, um, thank you for, um, the responses to the four pages of questions I sent, uh, in anticipation of this. So I don't want Mr. Walker and other members of, uh, Supporting Services to think that I did not have questions and that I'm not overseeing what you're doing. Here they are, and I thank you very much. Um, and I, again, want to thank you for the excellent job that you do.
Thank you so much. I think that concludes the deliberations on Transportation. Your presentation has been... Oh, you have one, I'm sorry, Mr. Armwood. Mr. Armwood has one other question.
Hi, sir. I'm I'm not really picking on you just because your bus left my grandson this morning.
Right, right.
Um, you're just why, justifiably proud of your, uh, program to identify preventable accidents, but when I, I went through driver training with the old Chesapeake and Potomac Telephone Company, and their philosophy was all accidents were investigated and looked at, and even what, when you got hit, there were classifications where even though it was not your fault, it was preventable. Were you paying attention? Could you have anticipated? And every accident got that type of review, and as a result, we had a very low accident rate, and that training has lasted me, uh, all my life. Uh, I'd like to just throw that out there and suggest that you look at every accident to see whether or not anticipation and, uh, whether or not they could've prevented someone else from hitting them. Thank you.
And I appreciate that, and 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 if I gave the perception that we didn't look at the non-preventables, I do apologize because we do look at them, uh, because every accident, uh, has to have an accident report from the driver within twenty-four hours done. The driver trainer has to meet with each driver for each accident. Uh, within seventy-two hours, this, the Transportation Supervisor has to do their report, their state report that we have to turn into the state. And during the, during those reports and those discussions with the driver, we are still drilling the driver, trying to find out what occurred during the accident, even if it's considered a non-preventable, we're still looking to see where we could have done better as as a driver. But the reason we don't take them into accident review at this time is because, uh, unfortunately, it can get quite numerous, so we really wanna concentrate on getting the preventables down, but we we don't just ignore the non-preventables. But point, we'll take it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, colleagues, it's about two minutes to five. Our public hearing, I just thought I'd mention this to everybody because I know everybody wants to spend the evening with us. Our public hearing is set to begin at seven PM. We have a hundred and twenty-two speakers who are allowed to speak at three minutes each, so we will be here until approximately four in the morning. So, um, having said that, we still have an agenda to get through, and we also still have executive session to go back into. And I just want... The rest of you can go. I also want to mention that if you do not, if we do not get through this before seven, I am not gonna let you go afterwards. We're gonna still go into executive session. Okay, so that should be incentive. All right. That brings us, Dr. Height, that concludes the, uh, the, your presentation, it's been fabulous. Um, we always like the system oversight meetings. Thank you to every, uh, Mr. Dotson, to you and your staff for your presentations and for keeping those key indicators, um, at the forefront. That brings us, Dr. Height, to our consent agenda items, and actually, I, there's one proclamation that I would like to read into the record, and, Mr. Armwood, um, since you've already picked on me, I'd like for you to be the person to do that. And it is Charles Herbert Flowers' proclamation, if you would... If you would do that for us into the record, I would appreciate it, sir.
Thank you for the honor of, uh, reading this, uh, proclamation for, um, Dr. Charles Herbert Flowers. Uh, proclamation in honor of Charles Herbert Flowers Jr., February 8th, 2011. Whereas Charles Herbert Flowers Jr. discovered the Army Air Corps in Tuskegee, Alabama, and was looking to train blacks in aviation, he enrolled in 1941 and was a member of the original class of African-Americans trained to become combat pilots by the Air Corps at Tuskegee College, graduating with 12 other heroic men as a Tuskegee Airman. And whereas Charles Herbert Flowers Jr. was the only one of the original 13 pilots that completed the combat training, the first Af- African-American in history to be selected as a military flight instructor, trainer, and trained Tuskegee Air Cadets to fly for five years. And whereas Charles Herbert Flowers Jr. majored in Business Administration at North Carolina Central University, then known as North Carolina College for Negroes, and became the first black manager of a North Carolina Alcoholic Beverage Commission liquor store in Winston-Salem, North Carolina, and co-owner of a drugstore. And whereas Charles Herbert Flowers Jr. had been a Prince George County resident since 1963, when he took a position as an electronic technician at Greenbelt's NASA Goddard Spaceflight Center and retired in 1960. And, I'm sorry, in 1990. And whereas Charles Herbert Flowers Jr. continued to contribute to his community as an instructor, a child advocate, a community activist, a church leader, and a member of the Tuskegee Airmen Mentoring Program, assisting at-risk students in this county. And whereas Charles Herbert Flowers Jr. had received recognition as an outstanding American, a role model, a mentor, an original Tuskegee Airmen, and a national African-American hero by the Prince George County Maryland Delegation and the Maryland General Assembly. And whereas traditionally, significant contributions made by African-Americans and other minorities have been left out of written history, and the preservation of history is often aided through the naming of buildings. Whereas that Prince George County Board of Education agreed to rename Ardmore High School the Charles Herbert Flowers High School on February 24th, 2002. Now, therefore it be resolved, the Prince George County Board of Education wishes to recognize the many contributions of this extraordinary leader and presents this proclamation in memory of Charles Herbert Flowers Jr. on the 8th day of February in the year 2011. Signed, Virginia M. Jacobs, Esquire Board Chair, Dr. William R. Height, Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you very much, Mr. Armwood, and we know that you worked at that fabulous school, and, um, we are very much appreciative of what his contributions have been, not only to our society, but our school district. Um, on that note, colleagues, I entertain a motion for items 10.1 through 10.4 for approval. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you, Ms. Beck. And probably move the second that the board approves consent agenda items 10, 1 through 10, 4. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Seeing none, motion pass. Thank you. Colleagues, we have no unfinished business for this evening. We do have one item for a first reader, and that is Board Policy 50, 4150, Leave of Absence. I entertain a motion only for acceptance as a first reader.
Move to accept.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. And Ms. Johnson's been properly moved to accept and accepted to approve Board Policy 4150, Leave of Absence. All in favor?
Aye.
Objections or abstentions, seeing none, motion pass. Thank you. That brings us, colleagues, to item 12.2 under new, under. We have an emergency item, I'm sorry, and we have one registered speaker. And that person is the Honorable, um, Thurman Rhodes. If you will please come forward, sir. And the item, uh, on the agenda is Possibility Prep STEM Charter School.
Madam Chairperson, Madam Vice Chair, Superintendent Height, Deputy Superintendent Coleman Potter, members of the Board and staff of the Board of Education. First of all, I know you've had a very long afternoon, and thank you for indulging me for a very short moment, uh, to, uh, address the item before you regarding Possibility Prep STEM School. I would like to read a prepared statement that I will leave with the Board. Everyone involved with and committed to the success of Possibility Prep fully understands the reason for Prince George's County Public Schools taking the action they have and calling for specific changes at the school. We appreciate the district's understanding of the challenges faced when opening a new school, and we agree that the issues, while serious, are not insurmountable. All of issues, all of the issues identified by the district are already being addressed, and they will be fully corrected for the benefit of our students and the community. It is because of our commitment to the success of Possibility Prep that the Charter Board, along with Edison Learning and the school leadership, will aggressively rectify the issues detailed by the district. We are working together to provide a detailed management plan with performance metrics by the February 15th deadline. Possibility Prep has never been envisioned as just another school. Our goal from the beginning has reflected the Board's desire to create a challenging educational environment that is uniquely designed to prepare young men for higher education and careers of their choice. The, to, and, to implement this type of educational design takes a unique commitment on the part of the school's leadership and staff. In the coming weeks, we are dedicated to further focusing our work to ensure the school is on the appropriate and desired path. We appreciate that Dr. Height and Dr. Coleman Potter have maintained an open line of communication with us, and are confident that our response to this action will achieve their final approval. That's our written statement. Let me add that, um, in meeting with a few members of our Board yesterday, one thing that we are in full agreement with as a Board is that we have learned many lessons from the opening of the school. We have had a number of challenges. An unanticipated, very diverse student body, some unanticipated transportation issues, and some unanticipated leadership issues. We have tried to meet these challenges forthright. We have, in hindsight, looked at the decisions we've made, and we recognize that there's some decisions that we could've made better, and we accept the responsibility for the decisions we've made. But we assure you that the decisions we've made have been in the best interests of the young men at that school. Let me add finally, on a personal note, that as the members of this Board, and I think I speak for most of the members of this Board, of the school, that the one thing that we feel we cannot apologize for is the urgency. The urgency that such an institution as this remain in this county and in this country for our young men. In that regard, we ask that you do give some due consideration to the recommendation with respect to our ninth grade for next year. It is interesting to note that we followed the resolution today regarding Charles Herbert Flowers, because personally, my son graduated from that school, and when I came back from a trip last week, funeralizing a family member, I was reminded of that generation. That generation of Americans who fought a war and put a man on the moon. And I felt renewed hope and renewed resolve as to why we're dedicated to the principle of this school, because we have lost a generation. A generation that unfortunately I see every day in the work that I do. And we're about this school because we don't want to lose another generation. We will, we recognize that that is an urgency. We are the sons and daughters of that great generation. The person I funeralized last week was a son of the Depression, who stopped school at the fifth grade to help raise a family after lo- losing his father, but still went on to become one of the Buffalo Soldiers who fought in World War II. And upon coming, coming home, decided that what was most important was the gain in education. He obtained his GED and his bachelor's degree. He, like many others in that generation, stand as stalwarts as to our duty to preserve and promote education for our young men in this country. We ask, we implore you to allow us to continue in this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Height, yield to you for any comments, concerns you want to address before the Board prior to accepting a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, um, thank you Judge Rhodes for attending and for your comments. As the Board knows, on April 29th, 2010, the Prince George's County Board of Education approved the Contract for Possibility STEM Charter School, also known as Possibility Prep, to operate and open, and open a public charter school in our county for the 2010-2011 school year for grades six through eight. Since the opening of this public charter, the school has been closely monitored by our staff, and since its opening, we, the school has also experienced some implementation and operational challenges. And those challenges have been in the following areas. Academic performance, not so much the absolute performance of students, but the absence of a STEM curriculum. School leadership, and unfortunately, there was, um, a change in school leadership, and so this, uh, probation deals with the, the school hiring a dynamic school leader who's able to really ratchet up the instructional rigor required by the charter application, particularly around STEM. The fiscal status, and unfortunately, the fiscal status has been closely aligned and associated with a decline in student enrollment, um, since the opening of school. And as a matter of fact, to meet the, the decline in enrollment, um, we had, we've asked for and received a, a budget adjustment for, uh, this fiscal year. And that budget reduction, uh, unfortunately leads to the reduction of six staff members. And so, the charter school agreement between Possibility Prep and Prince George's County Public Schools permits the school system to, among other things, place the charter school on probationary status to allow the implementation of a remedial plan pending a decision to revoke the charter, schools charter. And so specifically in that plan, it talks about performance metrics, timeframes, professional development, uh, performance standards, and then a monthly report on academic and behavioral, um, instances related to their students. Additionally, it speaks to the selection of instructional leader, the implementation of a mentoring program that was also defined in the charter, the implementation of a positive behavior intervention system, the, some issues associated with the physical plant, and the, uh, recommendation to deny the expansion to ninth grade in 2011, 2012 based upon the severity of the concerns at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Um, colleagues, this is on the agenda as an emergency item. Just a reminder, whatever motion is put before the floor requires a two-thirds vote. Um, any questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Johnson?
Dr. Height, I have read your recommendation. I have also read the original document about the request to even form this school. As you know, I am very clear about charter schools and alternative types of things. STEM is one of the most dynamic and promising types of courses, but delivering it is also an extreme challenge. I have been watching this and had real concerns from day one about the ability of anyone at this moment without or outside of an entire school system, support system, to be able to deliver such a curriculum without the infusion of millions of outside dollars. To that end, I wish to say, I believe that you have given a lot of time, you have overseen, you have been courageous in, particularly as I have questioned it, in your support of saying, "Let's see what they can do." The turnover of administrator. So, I say to you, I cannot vote to allow this emergency in terms of allowing the continuance. It is about children and the numbers of emails that are starting to come of parents who are disheartened, disillusioned, angry, and frustrated. We must listen to them. So, at this point, I will let you know that when the vote is taken, my vote will be no.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Dr. Height? Anything further? Okay. Um, colleagues, I will, um, there was one area, Dr. Height, that I wanted to point out in the resolution, and that was that it's minor, but it's significant in that sense. And that was page three of five, where you have at the conclusion of the 2010-2011 year, and then I heard it in your comments, but just, um, depending on how the vote goes today, that that's prior to the conclusion that you're able to indicate a full review?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to accept the recommendation of the Superintendent.
I second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved the second to accept Superintendent Height's recommendation for Possibility Prep STEM Charter School. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Burrows?
I'm gonna make my question extremely quick, because, uh, we will be here till midnight tonight. Um, Dr. Height, and you're confident with this, uh, year probation, the school will be able to, uh, perform, uh, to a satisfactory, uh, standard?
We're monitoring every month, and, Mr. Burrows, we're also working very close with the, with the Board of, um, the Possibility Prep, and we are monitoring, um, student performance data, both in reading and in mathematics. And that's why I think that the amendment to the, the final sentence, prior to the conclusion of the 2011-2012 school year, is, is appropriate, because we will base the recommendation to move forward on the performance, uh, against those metrics from now to the end of the year.
Thank you. And I support that.
Mr. Harris?
Dr. Height, isn't it true that, um, most of the problems with Possibility Prep that we're seeing right now are problems that you've seen with every other charter that's, that's opened up?
Many of them are, uh, Mr. Harris, and, and many of them are associated with just new schools attempting to start up, particularly in, um, inside of some statutory requirements that make it hard for, um, schools to start. However, there are a couple of things that, um, are not consistent. So, most will have a curriculum, and Possibility Prep also has a curriculum, but the absence of the STEM curriculum concerns us. Um, and then the, uh, one of the reasons that the, that the, um, charter was so intriguing was the 100, the mentorships. And so, those mentorships have not been developed as of yet. So, that is another problem that is, um, that we're looking at. That's a concern. We've shared that with the Board, um, and they have indicated a desire to work with us. All of the others, many of the fiscal, um, challenges, many of the students who begin at the, at the charter school and, and find that this is not for them, um, not at the numbers, uh, associated with this, but those are consistent with other charter schools, and most of ours have been placed on probation.
So, o- other than the STEM, the absence of, absence of a STEM curriculum, um, the mentorships that they said they were gonna do, and was there something else?
No, those are the, those are the two.
So, other than those two things, everything else has been, is pretty- So, other than those two things, everything else has been, is pretty uni- uniform, or is, is-
It's consistent with problems at the other schools. Now, this, this school was larger.
Right.
Which means that the, um, when you have students leaving, the, the numbers are larger. This stu- this school opened over 400, and that's unlike many of the other charters that we've opened. Most have opened much smaller.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Uh, the motion on the floor is to accept Superintendent Height's recommendation. Ms. Are you pushing Ms. Waller's button, Mr.? Mr. Armwood. That's what threw me off. I thought he pushed the wrong one. Sorry.
Um, Dr. Height, one of the c- concerns I have about the possibilities, I'm a product of an all-boy school, very much support them, and I've, uh, worked in science and technology schools, uh, STEM schools. But they attempted to mix a mission that might not really be compatible. It was perceived, from my understanding, uh, that the science and tech, the, uh, uh, advanced children who wanted that challenge, were looking for one thing. Parents who wanted the possible mentoring and discipline they would get in an all-boy school, under those mentors, uh, were looking for something else. And that's what caused much of the problem, is the mission was perceived to be two different and perhaps incompatible things at this point. Has that been addressed? Have they addressed what their mission is going to be? Is it going to be an elite STEM school for boys? Or is it going to be a school for, uh, boys who need mentoring and structure?
Right now, Mr. Armwood, it's still both. And as we, as we move forward with the charter and continue the conversations with the, with, with the charter school board, we, we are really talking about that, because you're right. I think that it, it's one, the, most of the parents who, who signed up for the school wanted both. They wanted the mentorships and they wanted the STEM, um, curriculum. But they wanted it for different reasons. And some wanted to advance academically, others wanted because, um, their, um, students may or may not have been experiencing difficulty in a, in a previous place. And the other, the other part of this is, by law, in Maryland, charters are open to everyone. So, it, you can't refuse students simply because they may have behavioral, um, challenges. You, we must take everyone, um, inside of charters. Sure, you can, yes, yes. And inside of the chartering agreement, we did charter, we did agree to a chartering agreement that had both of those.
Thank you, Mr. Armwood. Ms. Dan Call, roll, please.
On the motion, Mr. Armwood.
Aye.
Ms. Boston.
Aye.
Mr. Burrows.
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks.
Aye.
Ms. Higgins.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Ms. Beck.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Eight to one, motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, um, Dr. Height, that brings us to, that concludes our meeting for today. Other than, um, we need to re-convene in executive session. Time is 5:22.